Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for October 27th, 2025. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Corey Stites.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Rachel Holtine.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Jenny Snell.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as presented. We have two proclamations. Our first proclamation is going to be read by Councillor Holtine and Snell, so if they'd like to go to the podium and take care of that proclamation.
Good evening. Is this working? Is it on? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilmember Rachel Holtine.
Councilwoman Jenny Snell.
And we are honored tonight to present the proclamation recognizing National Native American Heritage Month. I just want to speak that, you know, our last meeting here, there were a lot of tensions and issues around this, and as a city, we had a lot of conversations and reflection about if it was appropriate to still give this proclamation tonight in light of conversations here a couple of weeks ago. And we felt really strongly that the decision to keep this tradition is really important since a mission could actually fortify any historic erasure and invisibility in civic life that Native Americans have experienced. And we also want to recognize that over 500 people in our community self-identify as Indigenous, and so this proclamation is important for them. And we also recognize many of those people may have remembered a time before President George H.W. Bush first declared National Native American Heritage Month, so this is living history and memory for many people. All right. National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November National American Indian Heritage Month to recognize the achievements and contributions of Native Americans. And whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, the city of Wheat Ridge celebrates the rich tapestry of Indigenous peoples and honors their sacrifices, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of this country. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes that Native Americans inhabited the lands currently known as the Americas since long before they became known as the Americas, and that Native American people specific to this area haven't inhabited this land for centuries under their own governance. And whereas we pause to acknowledge that we are in the traditional territory of the T'Tatzas, the H'Nai, and the N'Chu, commonly named Cheyenne, the Arapaho, and the Ute. We further recognize the 48 contemporary tribal nations who once and currently live on the lands that make up the state of Colorado.
Whereas Native Americans in the United States and Colorado have endured historical efforts of genocide, institutional racism, and assimilation, yet Native American peoples' cultures, languages, and traditions persist. And whereas the city recognizes residents, public institutions, and local organizations to pay respect to Native American communities and Indigenous neighbors, seek out ways to learn more and create an intentional relationship of reconciliation, truth-telling, and coexistence. And whereas together we strive to preserve and respect the Native American peoples for their resiliency, traditions, and unwavering desire to instill their language and culture for future generations, and we support their efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved, we City Councillors Jenny Snell and Rachel Holtine alongside Mayor Bud Starker and the Wheat Ridge City Council do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Wheat Ridge and encourage all residents to join in this observance.
Thank you. I would like to ask Ismail Sadikov to come and join me at the podium.
How are you tonight? Good, thanks for being here. I'm very pleased to make a proclamation for National Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas during National Veterans and Military Families Month, we salute the brave and dedicated patriots who have worn the uniform of the United States, and we celebrate the extraordinary military families whose selfless service and sacrifice make our military the finest in the world. And whereas our nation's veterans represent the best of America, generation after generation, men and women have answered the call to defend our country and our freedom, facing danger and uncertainty with uncommon courage. And whereas our heroes have always relied on their families for strength and support, serving alongside our men and women in uniform, our spouses, siblings, parents, and children who personify the ideals of patriotism, pride, resilience, service above self, and honor. And whereas, as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, we send our gratitude to millions of service members, veterans, military families, caregivers, and survivors who have served and continue to serve our nation. And whereas, it is not only the person who wears the uniform serving our country, but also their families who make enormous sacrifices for our nation. And whereas, we honor them and their invaluable contributions, we share the pride in our armed forces, and we will never forget what they and their loved ones have done for us. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Veterans and Military Families Month. Throughout November, a grateful nation in the city of Wheat Ridge can show appreciation to the spouses, partners, children, caregivers, and survivors of our selfless members and veterans for their selfless sacrifice on behalf of our nation dated this 27th day of October 2025. I'd like to present this to you.
Say thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
So I just want to say it's an honor to accept this on behalf of the department and everyone that serves within our agency. I'm in the National Guard currently, and some of the values we learn and that brotherhood that we get, I feel that when I come to work every day, working in Wheat Ridge, and I feel the support that the City Council gives us and that the residents of Wheat Ridge give us, so just want to say thank you one more time, and it's an honor.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. We are now at our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity provided by the rules of the Council. No other place is not required by ordinance or constitution or the laws of our city, but Council has enacted this rule that invites the public to come and speak to them, so we open up the speakers both for people to come. You have, when I read your name, I'll ask you to come to the podium and please introduce yourself, give us your first name and your last name. If you would spell your last name, we'll try to get it right in the record. I will also give the name of the speaker on deck, so if you would be ready to speak when your time has come, that would be great. You'll have three minutes to address the Council, and there are three colored lights on the podium. The solid green light will come on after you've introduced yourself and when you begin to speak. When the green light begins to blink, you have 30 seconds left. When the light changes to yellow, you have 15 seconds left. And when the light turns red, please conclude your remarks and sit down. So our first speaker is, and we'll go to our speakers in the Council chambers first. I have a couple of folks online who are going to join us. So Holly Haynes is our first speaker, and Pat Quinn is on deck.
Ready? Three minutes is not long enough. I'm a talkative person. I moved to Wheat Ridge in 2020.
If you'd just introduce yourself, please, spell your last name.
Holly Haynes, H-A-Y-N-E-S.
Thank you.
Moved to Wheat Ridge in 2020. I've been in the horticulture industry, worked in the Botanic Gardens, love all things gardening. And in 2022, was at a pollinator summit and happened to ask around to see if anyone from Wheat Ridge was there because I wanted to volunteer in my new city. And Susan Bennett, who I think has already moved to Georgia, was there, and we connected, and she said, you know, we have a volunteer opportunity at Happiness Gardens, and I would love to plan and design a native plant garden to go in. And with the help of many volunteers, Bedrock Landscaping donated, Little Valley donated, we got to work and put in a native plant garden at Happiness Gardens. I was very excited to do this and wanted to continue to work. Towards the end of that project, I met YY, some people know her as Kristin. She had just started working with Parks and Rec. Her enthusiasm and horticulture knowledge was there from the get-go. I was so excited to be part of volunteering with her and so many of her volunteers at something I truly believed in. She strived to support all those amazing people with their plots and loved sharing her knowledge and skills. On top of all this, I think the really community building was the potlucks and the social gatherings that were hosted there. In 2023, with YY leading the charge, Happiness Gardens was awarded a grant that helped expand the native plant garden, and they partnered with Denver Urban Gardens to add a food forest for the whole community, not just within Happiness Gardens' gates. She asked if I wanted to help with the native plant garden expansion. Of course, I said yes. And even though my life was very busy, YY showed up with a ton of volunteers to help me get that job done. Isn't this what community gardens do? They bring people together and they build healthy, connected communities. It was an amazing time. The food forest was great. Uh-oh, it's blinking. Although I've not had the time to volunteer with YY and Happiness Gardens for the last two years, I'm so grateful to have worked with someone who is genuine, caring, and knowledgeable. YY makes a difference every day for so many Wheat Ridge residents by educating and supporting not just the community garden members but wanting a better life for our whole Wheat Ridge community. Things she cares about, increasing access to healthy, fresh food, supporting biodiversity, helping to educate our citizens, connecting the community, and promoting civic engagement. This is YY Dennis's legacy, and I'm so fortunate to have worked with her. I hope the city of Wheat Ridge knows how invaluable she is and Happiness Gardens are to bring our community closer together and making us a healthier city. And I truly hope my schedule opens up in the future that I can volunteer with her again. Thank you so much for y'all's time.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Our next speaker is Pat Quinn and Kathleen Martell on deck.
Pat Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N. I live at 3995 Moore Street in the District 3. I came here tonight to talk to you all and do something really weird. You probably all think I'm weird anyhow because I started showing up a few years ago here in the chamber and didn't leave, and been to a study session and watched you all, and learned an incredible amount about how the city works, how it operates, and I've learned a lot from each and every one of you. Seeing how you all interact through each of your unique lenses and how you bring a lot to the table, and I just want to say thank you for what you have done. Some of you, this will be your last meeting. I expect a whole lot, you know, at least three of you to be the first ones to make the motion to adjourn. But I want to say thanks. It's very enlightening to see how you interact with the city staff. Patrick does a great job, and his staff have given you all the information you need to make the decisions that you make, and I just want to say again, thanks. And Mr. Mayor, they say imitation is the most sincere form of appreciation, or whatever that saying is. I watch the City Council meetings and how you preside over them when I run the Planning Commission meetings. And so I try to do pretty much how you do it because you run a really good meeting. I'm a Robert's Rules of Order kind of nerd, and I really appreciate, after being in the union as long as I have, I've ran countless meetings, and it's very important to run a good meeting to keep and mine people's time and what they do. So once again, thank you all, and I wish you, the ones that aren't going to be back, I wish you the best of luck in whatever you're doing next.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Martell, and Morgan Richards is on deck.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kathleen Martell, M-A-R-T-E-L-L, and I live in District 1. Similar to Pat, I really just wanted to say thank you to all of you on Council and Mayor Starker tonight. I've been attending meetings for years, and I'm inspired by everything you guys do and inspired enough to now run. And if elected, I am very excited to take the lead that you all have presented and move forward. Mayor Starker, Mayor Dozeman, Councilperson Dozeman, Councilperson Hoppy, and Councilperson Weaver, we wish you, I wish you the best as you move on, and I'm so sad that I don't get to overlap with any of you, but you've been an inspiration, especially you, Ms. Hoppy, and I hope to make all of you proud if I do get to serve on City Council. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Morgan Richards, and Alexis Hoffkling on deck.
Good evening. I'm Morgan Richards, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S. I live in Wheat Ridge and own a small business. I've raised my kids here, and I founded Wheat Ridge for Equity five years ago. Together, we've helped change the values of our community. And for those of you that this is your last meeting, I'm really grateful for each and every one of you because it took all of us to accomplish that. I also want to thank and acknowledge Mayor and Council for giving time to read the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. I appreciate you leaning into the complex and imperfect equity work. I have a single ask for you tonight. I ask the Council to make a statement against the Nazi symbol that was placed in Jepco Open Space a couple of weeks ago. It is just as important to speak up as to take action, and we historically have had people who are Jewish in our community since the get-go. They're part of our city's history, they're part of our community, and I think it is very important when there is hate and intolerance that we are specific as to what happened. We have to name it for us to be able to address it. And I know that we are all committed to this community being one of inclusivity and care, and I think it's very important for our community members to hear from you. Because I was curious why there had not been a statement, and yet I also understand that every day seems like a year at this point. So thank you again, thank you all for your service if you won't be up here next month, and I look forward to seeing you in community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexis Hoffkling, and the on-deck speaker is joining us online will be Amy DePierre.
My first name is Alexis, my last name is Hoffkling, H-O-F-F-K-L-I-N-G. I live in District 1. I'm primarily here to say thank you to all of you for your varying number of years of service and showing up and listening and listening and working, and I specifically want to say thank you for the often uncomfortable work of engaging through disagreement and difficulty and conflict over identity and background and values and worldview, which is necessary for democracy and often uncomfortable or painful, and the courage and vulnerability and grace that you bring and show to each other is really valuable. And I don't think anyone in this room has been perfect at exemplifying those virtues, and that is also, the grace to be imperfect in that, that you have offered each other and modeled for us is worthy of celebration. And we have a lot of conflicts in our society that are not handled with grace and kindness and tolerance for each other and leaning into each other's best intentions, and so I want to celebrate the many inglorious ways that you have done that over the years and right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next speaker is, joining us online is Amy DePierre, and I have Teri Gale on deck. So if you would like to unmute and introduce yourself. I'll check with the clerk, do you know whether we have these two individuals joining us online? Do we...
Hello.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Amy DePierre, that's D-E capital P-I-E-R-R-E, and I've been a Wheat Ridge resident for many years in District 2. I'm also a community activist and a food systems scholar who works at the intersection of agriculture, education, and equity. Food systems sit at the heart of some of the most pressing challenges of our time: climate change, biodiversity loss, cultural erasure, and questions of care and belonging. They are about how food is grown and distributed, and tell us about how societies imagine their futures and organize their values. What has unfolded at Happiness Gardens over the past weeks is painful and has revealed something deeper than a single conflict. It has surfaced systemic issues of communication, power, and cultural understanding. I know and deeply respect both individuals at the center of this situation. I've had the honor of learning from YY, Kristin Dennis, whose commitment to soil health, ecological literacy, and community education reflects a deep and enduring stewardship of place. I've also had the privilege of learning from Nerissa Rivera, whose food and teachings on Indigenous practices illuminate the cultural and relational dimensions of our connection to land and each other. Both women bring nourishment and knowledge to many in Wheat Ridge and beyond, offering distinct yet complementary forms of wisdom that enrich our collective home. This moment calls us not to choose sides and further divisiveness, but to seek understanding. It is an opportunity, a chance to pause, to listen, and to repair harm that has occurred. As a community, we can model what it looks like to hold complexity with grace and move forward together. I urge the city to prioritize dialogue, meditation, and cultural awareness training among staff and volunteers, and to create clear, transparent mechanisms for addressing conflict before it escalates. These steps will not erase what happened, but they can begin to restore trust. I believe Wheat Ridge is stronger when we lead with care for our neighbors, for the land, and for the shared humanity that connects us. Practicing accountability asks us to be honest about the histories we've inherited and the systems that shape our relationships. Our food systems remind us that land carries memory of care, of conflict, and of our capacity to begin again. If we can meet one another with humility and empathy, even through tension, we can lay the groundwork for a more just and connected future. Thank you, and thank you, Council, for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Our next and last speaker is Teri Gale.
I was part of the Wheat Ridge Racing Equity Task Force a couple of years ago, and I don't know if you can see me on screen, but I'm an African-American, which represents 1% of Wheat Ridge's population. I believe in the city of Wheat Ridge, I believe they're going to do the right thing, and I urge you to take the advice of Rachel and many of the others who spoke here today, and make sure that diversity and equity and inclusiveness stay a part of what you do.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all of our public speakers tonight. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 1. Councillor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Item Number 1A is a motion approving a waiver of the city's right to of first refusal related to the sale of Frutail School Lofts. At issue, Frutail School Partners LLC intends to sell the Frutail School lost property to Foothills Regional Housing. The purpose of the sale is to ensure the long-term affordability of the 16 dwelling units. A recently approved state law provides local governments with the right of first refusal to purchase qualifying affordable housing properties. The purpose of this motion is to waive that right, allowing the sale to proceed.
And this is our consent agenda, Consent Agenda Item 1B, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number 1B, Resolution 512025, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District regarding the design of drainage and floodwater. the others who spoke here today, and make sure that diversity and equities and inclusiveness stay a part of what you do.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all of our public speakers tonight. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number One. Councilor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Item Number One A is a motion approving a waiver of the city's right of first refusal related to the sale of Frutdale School lofts. At issue, Frutdale School Partners LLC intends to sell the Frutdale School lost property to Foothills Regional Housing. The purpose of the sale is to ensure the long-term affordability of the 16 dwelling units. A recently approved state law provides local governments with the right of first refusal to purchase qualifying affordable housing properties. The purpose of this motion is to waive that right, allowing the sale to proceed.
And this is our consent agenda. Consent agenda, Item One B, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number One B, Resolution 51-2025, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District regarding design of drainage and flood control improvements for Clear Creek at 44th Avenue to Balsam Street. The Mile High Flood District plans to advance the preliminary design of flood plain improvements of Clear Creek in the Clearvale neighborhood. The project is situated between West 44th Avenue and Balsam Street, ending east of the Charlie Brown Pedestrian Bridge. An agreement with Mile High Flood District needs to be executed to outline the responsibilities and funding obligations to advance the project. Future agreements between the city and the Mile High Flood District are anticipated for the final design and construction.
Thank you. This is Item One A and One B. This is on our consent agenda item. Would may I have a motion on to approve One A and One B?
I move to approve a waiver of the city's right of first refusal related to the sale of Frutdale School lofts.
And One B?
And One B. I move to approve Resolution 51-2025, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District regarding design of drainage and flood control improvements for Clear Creek at 44th Avenue to Balsam Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Two. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
I am proud to, Mr. Mayor, introduce Council Bill Number 52-2025, a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2026 budget year.
Thank you. This will be a public hearing. It is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor Stark and Council members, good evening. It's my privilege to present the 2026 proposed budget to the city of Wheat Ridge. We presented in great detail the proposed budget to you at the October 8 study session. So tonight's presentation will only be about two hours.
Good.
Just joking. So this evening, I'll be presenting a very brief but summary before you consider adoption of the 2026 budget this evening. Creation of the 2026 proposed budget was directly driven by and aligns with the updated mission, vision, and strategic priorities that you at the City Council established during the 25-2025 retreat. The proposed budget balances financial stability with progress, positioning Wheat Ridge to advance its vision, ensuring that essential services are funded while transformative projects move forward. Next slide, please. So, between the general funds and seven special funds and three capital funds, we project to have $126 million in funding available in 2026. Of that, just over $101 million will be appropriated, leaving approximately $24 million at the end of 2026. The 26 budget, total budget, has increased approximately $5.8 million, or 6% from the original 25 budget as adopted. This can be attributed to a $4.6 million increase in the general fund operating budget compared to last year, a large reduction in CIP expenditures as we wrap up major projects such as Wadsworth, and doubling of our 2J fund expenditures as we start to tackle these community-driven bond projects. Together, the capital projects, the CIP renewal Wheat Ridge and 2J budgets account for 38% of the 26 proposed budget, which is tied directly to investments in the city's infrastructure. Now, speaking of the general funds specifically, we are looking at $51 million in general fund revenue for next year. We do expect 2025 general fund revenue, first of all, to come in about 8% higher this year than budgeted. However, total general fund revenue is projected to be flat next year compared to this year. General fund revenues are primarily comprised of sales tax at 56%, as you can see in the chart of total revenue. Sales tax is expected to come in at about 3.5% higher at the end of this year, and we are estimating a conservative 3% in 2026. General fund expenditures, we are proposing a budget of just over $53 million. Expenditures represent a 7% increase compared to this year's budget. The primary reason for this increase is approximately $430,000 in fees for our enterprise resource management software, all the upgrades to our financial management payroll, building permit, sales tax systems, $690,000 in fees for our photo radar system. These will be offset, those expenses will be offset by revenue. And then also compensation and benefits have increased as well, encompassing that 7% increase. We are continuing to fund several community partners. First of all, we are funding $100,000 for our annual contribution to our Carnation Festival, $120,000 for the Wheat Ridge Business District, which will allow for a new grant program next year, $75,000 for businesses impacted by the improved Wadsworth project, and then also $326,200 to our friends at Local Works. We also had our community partners grant program again this last year. We are proposing $203,000 awarded to 33 different partners. And the funding does include, this funding does include the additional $3,000 that City Council directed at the study session for the Wheat Ridge High School Fighting 43s program. Now, jumping into some specific projects, I will now turn to our capital programs and briefly highlight major capital projects in the 26 budget. First of all, in the capital improvement program budget, major projects are estimated at about $9.8 million. Those projects include multi-use path on Wadsworth from 32nd Avenue to 35th Avenue that will connect to the improvements on Wadsworth that are happening right now. That's $7 million. And most, a lot of that is covered by a grant as well. Our annual street preventative maintenance and traffic management programs, $2.4 million. Then a Merkwood drainage project is a neighborhood drainage project off of 32nd Avenue on the west side of town, $350,000 for that. Then moving on to our renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund projects, we have $2.2 million budgeted in that budget. And those projects include project management for the Youngfield Esthetics Project. Most of that money for that project is in this year's budget. They are started, they have started to work on that. And then also design for a sidewalk on the east side of Youngfield from 38th down to Clear Creek. A new traffic signal at 44th and Eldridge, another drainage project up at Lake Mount, Lake Mont, that is area just south of the Gold Line Station area, where we'd have a neighborhood drainage or a business community, commercial drainage issue up there that we're going to help fix. And then about $450,000 of improvements to our beloved rec center. Now moving on to our 2J bond fund projects, we have these broken down into three different categories: drainage, corridors, and sidewalks. First of all, we'll start with drainage. We are budgeting $3.9 million for some drainage projects, $900,000 for emergency storm sewer repair across the city, $2 million for priority repairs to our storm sewer system that we've identified, then $1 million for the Clear Creek, 44th to Balsam flood plain improvements that will take numerous homes out of the flood plain. Moving on to corridor projects as part of 2J, the big one is the 38th Avenue West, Youngfield to Kipling Street project. We have $11 million budgeted next year for that, finalizing the design and starting construction. Around about, in partnership with the city of Edgewater at 26th and Harland, our portion is $550,000. And then a new traffic signal at 44th and Tabor. We just did finish the warrants for that study, and it did warrant that a traffic study or a signal is needed there at 44th and Tabor. So, we're excited about that. That's about $550,000 just for design and right away. Then moving on to sidewalks, we have $6.53 million budgeted for sidewalk improvements. And again, back at Tabor Street, multi-molded improvements, $4 million for design. This money, most of this is coming from a grant as well. Our first round of sidewalk gap construction, which was one of the major projects that we heard from our community that they wanted to see as part of 2J, we have $1.15 million set aside for round one. Improvements to 35th Avenue, just west of Wadsworth, and that will, that it will be designed, budgeted for '26. And then we do have a grant for construction of those improvements. Update to our ADA transition plan of $200,000, general sidewalk maintenance across the city, $300,000, ADA pedestrian ramp installation of $230,000, and some traffic calming on Miller and Uppam of $150,000. And then we move on to our open space and concentration trust budgets. We have $7.1 million budgeted in those two budgets. We are putting aside $2 million for the potential acquisition of open space and park space at the closed Wilmore Davis and Cholor Strand elementary schools. $800,000 to start design for a new outdoor pool at Anderson Park, $720,000 for some parking lot improvements at Prospect and Anderson Park, upgrade to Stites Park irrigation, $181,000, a new playground at Frutdale, $400,000. Some improvements to our Clear Creek Trail, just $100 million. We're getting some grant funding for that as well. New playground at Prospect East, $125,000, and some Pilates Reformers, active adult center lobby furniture, and an upgrade to our sound system at the rec center. And that is it. Very brief summary, but that highlights the major revenues and expenditures and major projects that we are proposing for 2026. So if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, we would entertain comments from the public. I have no one that has signed up to speak for that, so I will go to questions from Council. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Goff, in the budget narrative, in like the actual, like big budget, there we had anticipated, we know that the sale of Frutdale is happening soon, and we have an unrestricted fund balance at 17% that we're going to hold, and that'll bring us up to 19% when we get the monies back from that. But I didn't see in the narrative anywhere where we were anticipating the sales of the other properties that we own on 38th, on 35th Avenue, like not, sorry, on Wadsworth.
Wadsworth, yep.
38th, 35th, on Wadsworth. So we have three pretty significant properties on Wadsworth that are on the market, and those are going to be one-time incomes into our budget. So is there any sort of like potential anticipation of where that will land, our unrestricted?
We have not, we did not show those revenues in the budget for 2026, just because there's uncertainty when those will, sales will go through. Once that happens, though, the money will go back to the CIP budget, because that's where the, that's where they were purchased out of. So, we'll use those. It won't impact the general fund reserves.
Great, thank you.
Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, are there any more questions from Council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 52-2025, a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2026 budget year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. First, as always, thank you, staff, for all your work on the budget. I can, I budget my house, and it's a lot of work. I can't imagine doing the city. I also really want to recognize just a lot of, I'm really happy to see that we're setting aside money for both Wilmore Davis and Cholor Strand. I know that's a conversation that's been happening in District Two and District Three over several years. And we, that's just land. We don't ever get another opportunity. And I know both of those sites are really important to the community. So thank you for setting those funds aside. I'd like to actually propose an amendment to this year's budget. I've, over the last couple of weeks, been working alongside my colleagues and staff and community members to try and figure out what are a couple of things next year that we could do to help us be able to continue scaffolding on the success we've had in the, in the five years that I've been, I've been here for six, six, technically six in a week. But we've done a lot of really good work in this community. And first to move forward with some of the equity, diversity, inclusion, and access. I always want to say action, but I know it's access. So, a couple of things I heard two weeks ago that I think are really important to the deep values of our community, and deep values across, you know, belonging and feeling like this is a welcoming community, but also deep values we have around stewardship of our land. When I first moved to Wheat Ridge, one of the first thing I learned is that most of my neighbors were actively taking care of their properties in the form of planting things, and they're proud of their trees. And so, so those are things that are really important to us as a city. So, I have a proposal I'd like to consider for an amendment to the budget. It's a $35,000 budget amendment proposal, and would include the following things: engaging an appropriate consultant to provide two cultural awareness trainings. Many of us remember, but not all of us were in council, we actually had access to that training a couple of years ago. So bringing that back, one training for city officials, including our boards and commissioners, staff, and elected officials, but then also offering another training for our community. We have many community members that are interested in accessing that, that awareness and that training so that we can all better understand the perspectives of our neighbors. And then also to work with our Parks and Recreation Department on a needs assessment and some recommendations for strategic partnerships and actions to increase land access and food sovereignty. We heard from several people tonight that it's work we're embarking on, but to do it well and make it sustainable for both the city, you know, and our resources and our partners, having a better sense of what's needed with some recommendations. And then also to work with a consultant that can help develop sustainable and resilient relationships with our tribal partners in the community. To do this work, we really need to be in relationship with indigenous peoples. And then also, lastly, to provide some funding for our Parks and Recreation to develop a community garden strategic partnership and operations plan. What we're hearing is that this is important. We have two community gardens. We have a lot of community members that touch the work. And the more aligned we are across our entire city, from the dais to our staff to our community, on what those priorities are and how we can accomplish them, I think it really serves being able to make sure we're putting the appropriate amount of resources in, and we're being strategic with our action. But it's important, as we do that work, that we actually include stipends for our BIPOC community members to participate as part of the planning of that. So that is my proposed amendment, so $35,000 for that scope of work. And I can give a shorter description of it as well. Thank you for considering that.
Councilor Holtein has made a motion to amend the, the motion on the floor.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. And Councilor Hoppe has asked to speak on this.
I appreciate Councilwoman Holtein bringing this up. For, for this small amount of money, let me start here. There are things that we get flashlights shown on often. Sometimes it's through zoning. Sometimes it's something that's in our charter. Sometimes it's something that's happening in our community. And, and it doesn't mean that we shouldn't take action on it. And it doesn't mean that we weren't trying to have our best foot forward in the first place. And so, I absolutely support this, and I support the work that the $35,000 would, would be paying for. And I also think that it is something that we have committed to doing in years past, and it just has not been getting the time, the effort, or the funding for it.
Councilor Snell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add to this also, through our Work and Idea Committee, and through this past few weeks, I've learned of a possibility that, that I'd like to also add to this, this plan.
Wait a minute. Are you trying to amend the amendment?
No, I'm sorry. I just actually wanted to kind of like add another piece to Councilor Holtein's.
Let's just speak to the, to the motion, to the amended motion, please.
Copy that.
Okay. Councilor Larson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And tonight, I am not prepared to discuss the merits of this amendment. I will not support it simply because it is being introduced so late in the budget cycle that we haven't had a chance to really review it. And something introduced this late in the cycle is just, to me, it's just bad policy.
Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. So later in this evening's agenda, we're going to adopt or, or make a motion to adopt the Parks and Rec Pathway. So I just actually have some questions for staff in regards to the amendment. Is the programming around the community gardens not accounted for in this plan? I mean, do you need additional funding? I mean, do you need additional funding for that?
The plan doesn't speak to specifically funding at the community garden, and it certainly doesn't speak this specifically.
No, I, I recognize that, but I mean, is, is the strategic partnerships and planning around the garden, like was this encompassed in the Parks and Rec plan?
I would say strategic partnerships in general is mentioned. I don't know that it dives deeply into the garden specifically.
So can you speak to the need in regards to funding for programming around the community gardens specifically?
I'm sorry, it's somewhat of a difficult question. If you're talking about specifically what Councilmember Hulteen brought up, we do not have funding to address those specific items.
For the sustainability?
But just general community garden operations, we have funding.
Okay, so you, so this would be specifically for strategic priorities around happiness gardens? Sorry, I'm looking to you to just kind of maybe speak to specifics.
Yes, so we have both happiness gardens, and we've purchased Randall Park. And what, what I believe in, don't let me speak for you, Karen, but like we don't have a specific strategic and operation plans for our community gardens, and they, they're unique spaces. So that is, so it is strategic plan and operations. And I don't believe the Parks and Rec master plan gets into that granularity, but, okay.
Okay, thank you. And then can you speak to, Patrick, can you speak to the cultural awareness trainings and the cost of that? Or estimated cost?
Yeah, I believe Councilmember Hulteen and Snell had conversations with our manager of people and culture. And I think they've talked about, so I don't, I wasn't part of those conversations, but I think Councilmember Hulteen maybe, or Snell can, Snell can speak to that on exact cost.
Yeah, we took, we, I mean, we didn't, haven't put out specific bids, but we talked to a couple of different organizations that provide it. And we didn't get the pricing for the last time that it was offered. It was a little bit different scope of work. But the consultants that we talked to in general, for two trainings to develop it and conduct it, was in the like 10,000-ish range? Kind of depending on what, what we decide to scope on it. But that was about what was estimated. I mean, a huge range, but in general, that's where it landed.
So I, I think that this would need to have a broader conversation at a study session really around the parameters of what all, what the exact cost would be, what it would entail. And I think that it would be better to have the incoming city council members speak to that and address those issues than having it adopted in our final budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Om.
Thank you, Mayor. And I first want to thank Councilmember Snell and Councilmember Hulteen for, I know that you both put in a lot of work to, you know, do better by, you know, for our community. And a lot of thoughtfulness went into this. I understand it's a, you know, it's, it's coming in, coming in late, but there's been circumstances that have also come in late. And I, I think this is something that, you know, that can help to, you know, move our community forward, heal our community, and I will be supporting this, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion before I call Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, I would like to support the amendment. Because I'd like to go into a little bit about why we need the extra funding at community gardens. Community gardens are very different than regular park administration. We, we heard from a speaker earlier who's, who's volunteered in various types of garden situations. And, and they really require differently than a park, their own mission statement. And what, you know, we will, we will now have two community gardens essentially in Wheat Ridge. And they will be doing, they will be acting similarly, but they will be doing different things depending on the local community around them, which is really at the core of the idea of a community garden. So I am very in supportive, in support of having this extra funding for our park and rec supervisor to be able to guide the programming for these community gardens differently than simply a park. And I also think it's a very, very low amount relatively for both bringing in the, the trainings and that programming. These are, to, to repeat what Counselor Hoppe said, these are things we've committed to before, and, and this is putting some money behind that to continue that work. And this, to me, is a fairly low ticket. We're getting a lot for that amount, thanks.
Thank you. We are, we are discussing the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Okay, I would ask the, we're going to vote now on the amendment, and I would ask the clerk to poll the council. And a yes vote will be for the amendment, and a no vote will be against it. Okay, so the amendment passes by a motion, by six to two. Okay, we are going to return the, to the original motion, which was to approve the budget as amended with a motion by Mayor Stites. Not by Mayor, so Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem Stites, you know, it's a, getting a little bit hard, hard to tell sometimes. And a second by, by Counselor Hoppe. Is there further discussion on the original motion? Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Goff and his staff for a fantastic budget again this year. Well laid out. It speaks to our community values. I specifically, as a District Three resident, appreciate the money set aside for Color Strand and Wilmore Davis, because that's something that's very big for our community. I also want to thank Paige Piper, who helped me put together the Wadsworth Grant Recovery Program, and then council for supporting it, because those businesses on Wadsworth have had a rough couple of years. And while this will not make up for maybe lost revenue, the idea of this is to make sure that they have money to help them propel forward and make sure that they're successful as, as the Wadsworth opens up and can be successful businesses as we move forward. So again, thank you to staff, thank you to council for everybody who's worked hard on this. It's a, it's a fantastic budget, thank you.
Counselor Snell? Did you have, did you have a, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for helping me through this. I'd just like to, to also thank staff and, and really thank you for all of the work. And this has been a great process to have been, see this all the way through. To Counselor Hulteen's point, I, I'd like to just add through some of the work that we've, kind of conversations that we've had and through the work of the Idea Committee, I'd also like to, to talk about adding this to a future study session agenda, specifically about what I've learned is called an, a equity audit for the city. We're lucky enough to have some folks on staff who are pretty schooled in this, and so I'd like to add that to a future council agenda so that we can dive into that and learn a little bit more about it. But I would like to add that as part of this.
Okay, good, let's see if we have consensus to add it to a future study session. Do we have consensus on council for that? Looks like we do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do also want to say thank you to staff for the budget. I know it's a big lift. I know that we also were losing a key staff member in the same time of this. And so you guys getting this delivered is really great. I also just wanted to just, just so people know, you know, we're selling the Fruitdale loft schools, we'll be getting 1.8 million back from that. That brings our reserves from 17 to 19% when that happens. So if you just look at that, $35,000 for this work that we need to get done is 0.019% of that. So it's, it's a tiny drop of the bucket in this giant budget that we have.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So the, this will be my last budget vote while on council. And I would like to just kind of hone in on the gratitude for staff in regards to the fiscal responsibility that I have seen you undertake in the eight years that I've served on council. And also the creative and nimble ways in which you've responded to various things throughout the years, whether that be the pandemic or the cyber attack. And then also, I really want to give kudos to our team and Parks and Rec Department for their efforts in, in going for grants. You have been absolutely incredible in chasing other dollars and kind of making up for those gaps when we have them. And I, I just see you all being so not only responsible, but just aware and sticking to Wheat Ridge's values and so that we can have a sustainable city for the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is the first, the second time through the budget process for, for me. And I have to say that I am truly amazed and impressed with the effort that goes into this. And it not only reflects what, what staff thinks, but it also reflects, I, I think, a lot of the things that the people of the city of Wheat Ridge generally support. And it, and it, it bodes well for the future in that this budget looks toward not just next year, but it looks toward things that will happen years down the road that this budget kind of lays the foundation for. Specifically, there were a couple of things there I was very impressed with. The, the fact that the city will not be adding any new positions for, I believe, the third or fourth year in a row. Managing to, to keep, while merit raises and pay for performance is a very successful way of recognizing the, the best of the best within the city. It also, I think, is a very fair way to improve compensation for city staff and recognizing those that, that do a lot of the heavy lifting. The, the other thing that, oh, that we are, just to point out a couple of items here. I've made an issue with community, with the Community Partners Program before. I will continue to do that. I think we need to probably think about how we administer and assess the grant process under the Community Partners Program. But that's a discussion for another day. And then if anybody happened to be reading through there, there are what appear to be contradictions in traffic enforcement. But as, as been explained to me, there is a increase in traffic enforcement expenses, but that is offset by an increase in traffic enforcement revenue. And, and I think that, that's a very fair way to look at it. But other than that, again, I'm very impressed with the way this budget has come together. I compliment the staff, and I, I look forward to how we, how we work through this budget within the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to agenda item number, let's see, it's number three. Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion, or may I, actually, an introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill 192025, An Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 10285 Ridge Road from Agricultural One, A1 to Mixed Use Commercial Transit Oriented Development. And it looks like we have a presentation.
Very good. So this is a ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. By speaking on this item, you agreed to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation? I just think we do.
I think we do. She's patiently waiting, Stephanie Stevens, take it away.
Ms. Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Stephanie Stevens, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department at the city of Wheat Ridge, presenting case number WZ2502, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural One to Mixed Use Commercial Transit Oriented Development for a mixed-use affordable housing project at 10285 Ridge Road. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The site is located on the north side of Ridge Road, west of Miller Street and south of West 54th Avenue. It's approximately 10.89 acres in size and currently contains several unoccupied buildings from when it functioned as part of a six, much larger 68-acre group home campus for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, originally owned and operated by the state of Colorado Department of Human Services. The remaining buildings on site are currently undergoing remediation through the state and will eventually be demolished. The property is surrounded by a wide range of land uses and zoning designations with lower-density residential to the north and west, transit-supportive residential to the south, and commercial and institutional to the east. The site is currently Agricultural One, or A1, and is well situated to serve as a transition between surrounding properties. Adjacent properties to the north are zoned planned unit development in Arvada. To the west are property-zoned planned residential development in Wheat Ridge. To the south is planned industrial development in Wheat Ridge, including the Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant. And to the east is the Wheat Ridge Regional Center, which is operated by the Colorado Department of Human Services as part of that group, group home campus. The redevelopment site surrounds the regional center on three sides. And the regional center site will remain under state ownership and zoned Agricultural One and is not a part of this application. Further to the east is the Arvada Red Rocks Community College, which is zoned mixed-use transit in Arvada. The current A1 zoning allows for government facilities or one single unit home with up to 25% coverage or 35-foot height. The state of Colorado recently sold the property to Jefferson County Regional Housing, also known as Foothills Regional Housing, under the condition that it be developed primarily as an affordable housing site with secondary community services. FRH's intent is to redevelop the site as a mixed-use property with a range of affordable housing types, as well as educational, office, and community-supporting commercial uses. I'll go through a couple of site photos here just to give some context. This is a view of the subject property looking southwest from 54th Avenue on the west side of 54th, showing the vacant group home buildings soon to be demolished. While government facilities are permitted under the A1 zoning, existing group homes do not conform to the development standards of the zoning since they were built prior to the adoption of the city's zoning ordinance. Due to the longstanding vacancies of these buildings, they are degrading to the point where it's causing a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the community and the neighborhood. Rezoning of the site is necessary to bring the site into conformance and to facilitate redevelopment that improves the overall quality of life in the area. This is a view from 54th and Miller intersection, looking south again at the group homes. Here's a view looking north of the existing regional center access from Miller Street. Existing access would remain. And looking south from Miller at the regional center. And then this is the view from Ridge and Miller, looking north. The train tracks would be just right behind you from this photo. And this is on the west side of the property from Ridge, primarily vacant portion. So the applicant is requesting the zone change to MUC TOD in order to develop the site as a mixed-use property with a range of affordable housing types, as well as the expansion of the Red Rocks Community College Nursing Program, offices, and community-supporting commercial uses such as health services. The proposal not only responds to the housing needs of the community, but these uses are inherently transit-oriented since affordable housing is known to have low parking demands and needs to be located near transit to serve these populations. The demographics associated with the nursing program and health service uses also show high populations that use transit. If approved, the rezoning of this property would enable the opportunity to increase transit ridership, would work towards improving, improving general multimodal connectivity in this area, add to the employment base, all while revitalizing a dilapidated site in need of improvement. The applicant believes their proposal aligns with the city's adopted plans, goals, policies for the TOD area. Because the site is over 10 acres, a concept plan is also required and is typically reviewed after a rezoning is approved. But because this infill site will be impacting surrounding properties, the proposed concept plan is being reviewed by staff in conjunction with the rezoning and provided here for reference. The proposed concept plan limits what would be allowed and provides more certainty on uses and density proposed. It shows the primary use of the site as res- use of the site as residential with up to 200 affordable units, including a mix of housing types such as townhomes, apartments, and age-restricted apartments on the west portion. In addition, the plan shows the Red Rocks Community College Building on the northeast corner for the expansion of their nursing program, a supportive services building such as Community Health Center on the southeast corner, and an office or maintenance building for the housing units and grounds internal to the site. While MUC TOD zoning would allow for a more expansive list of uses from what's shown here, of unlimited height and density since the subject property is within the urban renewal area and part of the voter-approved area exempt from the charter's height and density limitations, the concept plan places these further restrictions, including limitations on density and height, and even lower heights along the north portion of the site where adjacent to low-density residential. The use and intensity of the proposed development is compatible with surrounding uses by incorporating context-sensitive restrictions such as landscape buffers, open space, lower heights, and architectural standards that respect adjacent development. This table here compares the existing A1 zoning and the proposed MUC TOD zoning development standards along with the concept plan limitations. The big takeaway is that the concept plan self-imposes more limited use and building height with a maximum of two to three stories along 54th Avenue and four stories elsewhere on site. And the zoning requires high-quality architecture. It also encourages adequate setbacks from nearby residential and supports design-oriented to activate the surrounding streets while also expanding the Red Rocks Community College campus and introduces the potential for community services. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on August 20, 2025 at the Community College. Forty-one people attended the meeting, and notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is served by special districts, we sent the application on referral to agencies as well as completed our internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a 1,000-foot radius, and the project was posted to Wheat Ridge Sweets. We received 15 comments on Wheat Ridge Sweets before the hearing, and they were reviewed by council and entered into the record. All 15 comments were in support of the proposal, generally because of the visible need for a mix of housing that the workers and next generation of Wheat Ridge residents can afford with necessary services near transit. One concern was raised about traffic, and staff will be requiring a traffic study and necessary roadway and sidewalk improvements to accommodate the use with future site planning if this rezoning is approved. Planning Commission reviewed the requests at a public hearing on October 16 and recommended approval. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria, one of the main being the consistency with the adopted plans and policies. The proposed housing options and mix of uses near transit directly support the city plan core values of serving a mix of incomes and inclusiveness. It also aligns with the desired outcome of peaceful coexistence by thoughtfully applying and calibrating form and use tools based on the features of the adjacent properties. City Plan identifies the site as transit village place type. Definition on the screen and in your staff report. MUC TOD zoning is appropriate because of the designation in the city plan, the proximity to the commuter rail station, and the variety of land uses in the area. The proposed concept plan responds to form and design recommendations of the city plan incorporates height restrictions, build-two setbacks that all match the surrounding of the site with more restrictive heights and greater setbacks where adjacent to low-density. Form requirements avoid imposition of additional height on adjacent properties. Appropriate screening and buffering are included, and parking needs are addressed on site. Finally, the city plan includes an implementation strategy to support housing development and meet community goals. Also, in January 2023, City Council adopted the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan, a guiding document addressing housing affordability in Wheat Ridge, and this plan identifies a clear need for multi-unit rental and ownership opportunities where possible to achieve that inclusionary mixed income outcomes. The site was slated for affordable housing when it was sold to Foothills Regional Housing. Proposed zone change responds directly to the goals identified in the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan and City Plan. So, ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. The proposed zoning contributes to the housing needs of the community, supports a mix of housing and services near transit, provides a unique and context-sensitive design that takes into consideration surrounding area and uses, improves public utility infrastructure, advances public improvements along roadways. The proposed zoning complies with safety and access requirements of the fire district, serving requirements of utility districts, and the development will likely add value to the area through high-quality design and redevelopment of a vacant, underutilized site. It's consistent with the goals and objectives of adopted plans and policies. Planning Commission recommended approval on October 16, and City Council is the final decision-maker on the request. If y'all approve, then the zoning is approved. So, that concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here for a presentation as well, and we're both here for questions. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. Thanks very much for this opportunity to address you. My name is Marcus Pacner, P-A-C-H-N-E-R. I'm honored to present on behalf of the applicants tonight. I do want to say our team across the board is led, and the applicant is the Foothills Regional Housing. I'll oftentimes call them FRH tonight. Our company, which generally does land use and community outreach consulting, and the design concepts, has been the planner throughout this process. I also want to start by saying staff has been remarkable partners on this, as has been the community. Stephanie has done a terrific job, and Gianna, really leading this. We have had a very integrated community planning process. I'll briefly touch on some of these things that have already been covered. This very unique-shaped site just off of Ridge Road, really addressing different edges on almost every part of the property, and how important we've thought about this site, and blending those edges and really becoming the buffer and the transition to establish neighborhood, but the need for affordable housing and transit housing. The history and disposition and site future of this is really important to understand. As was mentioned, those buildings have been abandoned for over 30 years now on this site. It was actually a very dangerous condition. The state of those buildings, there was a lot of damage. People were breaking in. So, the very first meeting we had on this was actually to talk about community investment and removing those buildings and bringing everything into the community. As far back as 2021, the state identified this site as a potential location for affordable housing, located this, acknowledged that this site was effectively an abandoned property and should be put up to sale. FRH, Foothills Regional Housing, we purchased this site in 2024 and have spent the balance of this time really focused on this site and how to bring it forward. Again, focused first on site remediation to really show our commitment to the neighbor. You all understand and know Foothills Regional Housing. Again, honored to speak for them. They are JFCO's housing authority. They are remarkable community leaders. They now have over 3,000 households that they serve. I'd just like to note how we always focus on housing and services, to find that balance. And we really look to sites to put housing near transit, employment, grocery, all the opportunities we need, and absolutely do not concentrate poverty. We want to blend and be part of the community and bring forward affordable housing. It is important to think about who we serve. We often talk about affordable housing, but this chart is actually just indicative of the actual AMI and who we'll serve. So, on the left, you have the 2025 maximum rents, and then the corresponding income limits. We highlighted the 60% AMI because we will have, although a range of AMI on this site, we'll have an average across the site of 60% AMI. Half of those attendees will be children, a third are elderly or disabled, and nearly half of the adults identify as female. But this also shows the rent and that income and how we work to bring everyone and provide housing for all. These are real jobs and real salaries that will live here. These are indicative of that average rent there in JFCO, and it shows our first responders, our teachers, our nurses, Amazon. These are people that will work and live and be contributing members of our community, and these jobs and this housing will be provided for them. We spent a lot of time looking at the site context, but I think it is important to really understand how we looked at this and how we tried to hear from the community about integrating the final design and the concept review. As you see, all of those edges, it really is about knitting this site back into the fabric of the community, blending those edges of the Red Rocks community into a single-family residential, and then all the transit opportunities to the south. Our approach is always to find the balance of the guiding documents, your plans, your incredibly thoughtful plans, and integrating community feedback into that approach. Of course, we focus first on your comprehensive plan, your 2025 plan, and your municipal code, to find the guidance, to see that housing need that you all have identified and the community has spent. But this is a fascinating site, as you see the in and out there of Arvada and Wheat Ridge, and really looking at the context of the existing zoning in Wheat Ridge, but probably more appropriately, looking at the zoning context of both cities, and finding that balance to pull us into a transit site just to the south of the site at the Arvada Transit Station. As was noted, the site right at the very top is in your transit village. We are making every bit of those elements come to life in what we are proposing. This zoning is bringing forward, centered around a rail station, reduced dependence on personal vehicles, really a walkable pedestrian-friendly that serves that transition to surrounding neighborhoods. Truly a gathering place, and what a remarkable opportunity to do that with affordable housing in Wheat Ridge. This is our zoning request, what we're before you tonight. Again, going from A1, since this has always been estate property, effectively, we're zoning this for the first time, bringing it into the Wheat Ridge Code. We're requesting MUC TOD, really meeting all of those key corridors and elements that you want to see in a transit zoning. What this yields is about 200 affordable housing units, serving seniors and families, also expanding an opportunity for Red Rocks Community College. You'll hear about that in just a moment. And then really maybe another potential for a community partner at the southern end or southern edge of the site as well. I do want to focus just for a moment on our community outreach process. We really spent a lot of time thinking about this. You all have had a number of significant rezonings and watching what has worked and bringing that in, but really wanting to integrate and learn from the community. We have had well over 150 individuals participate in this process, and we use something called a concentric outreach philosophy, where we focus on the most impacted neighbors and listen and integrate and bring their elements into the plan. So, you can see the Skyline Estates HOA, the Red Rocks community. We heard from all of them, and every element of our rezoning and the conceptual site plan actually reflect that work. We did three neighborhood voluntary meetings first, and we purposely put it in different zones, the northern zone, the western zone, because each issue is different, how I live on one side, the perceived issues that I may have. We wanted to hear and integrate that before we had the collective neighborhood meeting, and actually shared a lot of the results that we heard from neighbors and how we had reflected those elements in our plan. These are some of the questions, the data that we were seeking, and you can see the answers that we got. Yes, everybody wants housing now. We want it for seniors, for families. We wanted lower heights along the northern edge, along 54th, to transition to the two-story homes. Everybody acknowledged the slopes to the south, and we could go to four stories, to have gentle density as we move south, be sure and have family size, and find a way to partner with Red Rocks. That was a key goal of ours, but the community embraced that concept as well. We did things like dot cockracy, right, and actually just using sticky notes, to really focus on finding challenges that we all know you will hear and have a perception of traffic and crime and density, but really showing how the planning opportunity, these are opportunities. This is a wonderful community, incredibly well-managed, to be appropriately densified on the site on the southern end, but really make that nice, gentle transition to the neighborhood and to provide substantially improved infrastructure and sidewalks on a site today that doesn't have anything like that. This is a site that does not look like it's finished, and this really will bring a full community edge to the site. The concept plan, which Stephanie went through, again, you saw this element, but what we really want to show you is just how this came to live from the neighbors. They said, "We want senior housing. We want family housing. We want Red Rocks. We want four stories or less." We have honored that request, and we want lower heights on the north. That's where that meets the edge of the community at the street on 54th. So, really looking at a two-story, more of a townhome product, and then going four stories as we move south. Again, integrating all those elements, and most importantly, also for the community, bringing in the infrastructure, the sidewalks, the landscape bufferings. We did pictures of how they want to see the site, the pedestrian scale. All of those elements will be planned and will come to live hopefully as we move forward to a site plan. I will just close on the approval criteria. Again, I just want to note how much we have learned from the community. That first meeting, we had 88 people there, and we focused that we were going to listen and take those elements into the plan. We believe this does promote the public health and safety. It absolutely has adequate infrastructure, and we are going to further add and mitigate any impact. And then, as you know, one of the following must apply. We believe three of these. We are wholly consistent with your new comp plan, your housing needs assessment, and your housing guidance. It reflects a change in the neighborhood. The site is A1, long before the transit corridor and transit line, remarkable change, and then the unmet community need to bring both affordable housing and educational opportunities to the site. It has truly been an honor to work on this and work with staff. We appreciate the crescendo of support from Planning Commission, and with that, we would respectfully request your support for this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, did you have any further, does that conclude the staff report?
Yes.
Before I go to questions from council, I would like to invite members of the public to speak. I've had one member of the public sign up to speak. So, I would like to invite Kim Calomino to the podium. If you would please come to the podium and introduce us. First name, last name. If you'd please spell your last name and maybe tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge.
Sure. Oh, good evening. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O. I do live in Wheat Ridge. I am happily retired, though, so I don't work anywhere. I just want to start off, Mayor, I warned you I was going to do this. I just want to congratulate you first on your award by the Sam Mamet Good Governors Award. Well-earned, well-deserved, and thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you.
So, I'm here to speak in support of this zoning change. I've lived in Wheat Ridge 35 years. I've long been, I've come many times before you in prior councils. I'm an advocate for the community, and I'm an advocate for affordable housing and diverse housing options, both of which are addressed in this zoning application. This is a long vacant and blighted part of our community, and as we've seen in the past, when we finally address these things, we all benefit as a community. So, this is a good step in that direction. The proposed zone change aligns with the city plan, which designates this site as a transit village, which encourages a mix of uses and increased density near transit while promoting inclusiveness, which I think is really important to us, as we've heard tonight, serving mix of incomes and offering diverse housing options. It also addresses a need for a range of affordability in multifamily units, as identified in the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan. In addition, FRC has established voluntary design guidelines, which you've heard, the self-voluntarily limiting height and context-sensitive design. With its proximity to Arvada, and I'm really glad they did so much outreach into the Arvada community, this also serves as a regional response to affordable housing needs. It meets the criteria for zoning and brings new life to this property, and I support it and hope you will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more speakers to come from the public, so I will open it up to questions from council, of staff or of the applicant. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just have two questions. I'll keep it simple. Two questions for staff. The one is, on the far west side, is that adjacent property, does that have like an open space? Is that what that is generally?
Yes. Skyline Estates, the adjacent neighborhood to the west, has, I believe, it's a detention and open-space tract, and I believe it's over 50 feet wide and even wider in some locations, so a natural buffer.
And then my other question is, did the city require three neighborhood meetings? And if not, how did you, I guess, what is your opinion as far as what value did that add, having the three neighborhood meetings?
So, we only require the one neighborhood meeting for rezonings. We encourage more neighborhood outreach, always, and I think in this case, it's paying off because we do see the community input coming forward in the design.
Thank you.
Counselor Larson? Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Two very quick questions. The first is on the chart on page 60, that the opening couple of blocks there on density. When the zoning is changed to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development, the number of units per acre is basically unlimited. So the developer would have the option to suggest something that exceeds the charter limit of 24, 21 units per acre. But in this case, the indication is that the concept plan does not indicate they will exceed that amount, and they, the... Could you tell us about the number of units that will be going in?
Yes. The concept plan is self-limiting the total density to about 20 dwelling units per acre or 200 total units.
And we heard mention of the, the height lim... Not height limits, but the way the concept plan specifies that as the buildings go further north, they're lower, one or two-story, and then toward the bottom, and again, this is going downhill, so a taller building won't be quite as, as prominent. Do you have an indication in the concept plan of what the height limit, what the heights will be?
Yeah. The concept plan is maximizing the heights at four stories for the whole thing. In 54th Avenue, that, there's a little hatching you can see on the concept plan in your packet probably a little bit better, but that, along that 54th roadway, will be limited to two-to-three story, something maybe like a townhome-type product and then a multi-unit type product as you move further south on the west side.
And, and again, as you're going kind of downhill, a taller building will not, will not jump out as much as one up at the top of the hill.
That's correct.
And then one final question, this is for the applicant. Is there anything that you can... How would you describe the relationship that Foothills Regional Housing has with Red Rocks Community College? Is there a formal agreement there?
Thank you very much, Councilor, for the question. That building that's proposed there in the northeast corner of our site, it says anticipated educational buildings. That would be the partnership with Red Rocks, and it would be anticipated that we would actually sell them that site, so they would own that site. That's an important part of their campus. If you think of Crossing Miller, the opportunity for pedestrian connections, plazas, so we would partner with them, but they would actually own that site, and that was a very strong feedback from the community to actually include Red Rocks, pull them into the site, and have that as a community presence as well.
And, and at this point, is, is there an actual agreement, something on paper with Red Rocks?
I think that's just a proposed agreement right now, of waiting on the zoning to move that forward. Once the zoning would be in place, we would move forward with a formal agreement, but certainly has been brought forward in all of the concept plans, and Red Rocks has actually hosted most of the community meetings at their site. People have really been able to understand that relationship and have had terrific feedback back from the community.
Great.
Thank you.
You bet.
Additional questions from council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Are there any more questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 192025, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 10285 Ridge Road from Agricultural 1, A1, to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development, MUC TOD. On second reading, order it published, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication, as provided by Sections 5.11 of the Charter.
Motion and a second by Councilor Ohm. Do we have discussion on the motion? Start with Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was on council three or four years ago when a memo was sent out, just a, just a simple little memo, and I'll have to say, we sat through, I think, three or four hours of no comments, mostly from people that live in that Skyline Development, I believe. So I just have to say, we've come a long way, baby. And to see the public outreach, and I think that that's, that's a lesson learned. Again, we've, we've seen that with the Lutheran legacy campus, and now we've seen it here, that the more public outreach, the more we listen to the public, the more that's put into these proposals, that the more successful all of this will be. So I commend staff, I commend Foothills Regional Housing for doing a phenomenal job with this. This looks like it's really going to benefit the community, and it's going to be great for District 4, so thank you, and I'm in full support of this.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and I too want to thank Foothills Regional Housing and the applicants for seeing a vision for this, the site. You know, when, when you look at the site, and it just, it just looks like it's, you know, it's in really, really rough shape, and what it's going to be is just going to be amazing. The community really is behind it, and I will say to the applicant, I think it was a great strategy of having the three different neighborhood meetings and really, you know, trying to find consensus with the neighbors, you know, and having the opportunities and the, you know, the constraints. I think that was really good, get some really honest feedback, and, you know, the, the site is a great site, the access to the Red Rocks, you know, having the access to the, the light rail right there. A lot of, you know, people may not have cars, and having, you know, this access is incredible. And then, you know, just being really mindful of, you know, we can have, you know, varying density of like having some building shorter, some higher. I, I really like that, so it's a, it's a big yes for me. I'm really, I'm really excited about this project, and it's, it's a great team, and look forward to seeing, seeing when it's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, I just want to echo what Mayor Stites said about how far we've come in a couple of years, and that is, you know, attributed a lot to city staff, but also I really do appreciate the, the three community meetings. It makes a huge difference to bring people alongside. I also just want to note, it was really fun to see the city plan show up in our presentation and how that's being used. I think tonight's the first time we've seen that, and so really looking forward to more examples I've had in terms of how ideas like this are coming through and how that is being interpreted through the lens of the city plan. I think it's going to be exciting, but I just wanted to make note, I noticed it for the first time. And then just also appreciate all the partnerships coming forward on this, this adventure. It does remind me a little bit of a mini Lutheran, because it's like, you know, a lot of vacant lot that's been vacant for a long time, and, you know, having grown up next to vacant lots, you can always have rich imagination about what might show up there at some point, and then when finally something does, you kind of have to like claw through people's like own ideas of it. So I think that the process of getting to this point really shows that people have done their diligence to try and claw through the, the imagination of a vacant lot and turn it into a great community amenity. So thank you for everyone with your work on that.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
And thank you, Mayor, and I have been a very strong supporter of this project from the first time I heard of it, but I just thought I'd comment on what we saw posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks today. There were 15 comments posted on this particular agenda item. All 15, all 15 were in support, and since the majority, I believe it was 12 to 3, were from people living in Arvada, I thought I would read from the Arvada Chamber of Commerce letter that we got today, and a couple of very good points they make in here. "In a county as interconnected as Jefferson, city lines do not define our workforce. By approving the rezoning mixed-use, a region will gain much-needed workforce housing and educational opportunities on a site that has long been vacant and underutilized." It goes on to say that the, the connection with Red Rocks Community College is, is one of the linchpins of this, this proposal, and that, in, in my view, this project will become the, probably the flagship for an affordable housing development in, in our part of the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will echo my colleagues' comments. I am really grateful that this project came to fruition, particularly with the tension that arose at the beginning, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to finalize this as, before I'm outgoing. And I just would like to thank Foothills Regional Housing for their partnership. There's been wonderful collaboration with the city of Wheat Ridge, and this has been a very vacant, dilapidated property that has kind of assorted history, the very mysterious, people would kind of go there and, you know, just teens being teens, thinking that it's haunted and trying to prove whether it is or not. And so I just, I, this will be a wonderful addition to, to District 4, and District 4 has seen several projects with Foothills Regional Housing, and I think our community is better for it. So just thank everyone and for the applicant in having those robust public input meetings, as we've seen in the last eight years, particularly with these large developments, it really does matter, and when the residents are invested and engaged and like the outcome, then we are able to move forward and see that success. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further comments from council? I want to take a moment here. Right after I became mayor almost eight years ago, one of the county commissioners asked me to meet him up, up there and take a look at the site because it looked like it wasn't producing great outcomes for the communities that were there, and it, it certainly looked like it had a lot of potential. I believe we're, we've really done a great job. I want to take really a moment to thank our, our city staff, who were very diligently on this, bringing partners into the thing. We had numerous meetings with, with Foothills and other partners to see if they could make this happen. We had legislation to go through, the state legislator, legislature, in order to, to make this happen, and Foothills Regional Housing has really played a key role. I think the Pachan Group has done a great job in sort of understanding that we need to take this out to the public and get feedback on it, understand what the, what the neighbors and what the community is looking for, and I think we've really done a marvelous job to, to make this happen and get it to this point. So I want to thank all the, sort of all the folks that were involved in this. It takes a lot of people to make this happen, and I want to thank you all. So I have no further comments. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please bowl the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. On that, on that fortuitous note, I think we're going to take about, oh, maybe just a little bit short of 10 minutes, maybe eight, eight minutes or so for a little break at this point, so we will be back. We're going to take a short recess. Thank you.[1339.11] Okay, I'd like to reconvene our meeting. And with that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill 20-2025, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2024 additions of the International Building and Related Codes, including local and conforming amendments.
Thank you. This is a ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. Lauren Michelak will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know our packet was long, so I'll keep my comments brief tonight. Council last discussed the building code update during a study session on August 18th, where we covered several of our key administrative and technical amendments, including residential sprinkler requirements and the reorganization of Chapter Five. This ordinance tonight reflects the direction that you all provided at that meeting. The restructuring of Chapter Five, I think, is the update we're probably most excited about. All the administrative provisions are now consolidated into one article, which brings us in alignment with the format of the International Building Code. It will also thankfully make future updates quite a bit more efficient and less lengthy. We'll only touch the provisions which we need to amend at that point in time. This is a long code amendment. It's made longer in our packet by the inclusion of the explanatory notes and red lines. We will be modifying a version of the explanatory notes for our customers and contractors and our staff. That's pretty customary in a standard I code to have those kinds of explanations. As required by our municipal code, this same package was reviewed by the city's Building Code Advisory Board. That B-CAB group discussed the draft on August 11th, and then they voted unanimously on September 30th to recommend approval, forwarding that recommendation to you. If the update is approved tonight, we have a communications plan to ensure a smooth transition. Permit applicants may use either the 2018 or the 2024 codes through the end of this year. Beginning next year, all permit submittals will comply with the 2024 codes. We do have messaging crafted to those projects that are in our pipeline that we've been working with, who we know have been spending resources on preliminary construction documents, so they can get in a permit application, even if it's preliminary before the end of this year. And then, as we discussed in August, it's the new townhome sprinkler requirement that has a longer runway and would take effect one year later in January of 2027. I'm joined tonight by members of our Building Division team, Steve Peck and Renee Mario, here behind me. And we are available for any questions you may have later on.
Thank you very much. We would invite the public to speak at this time. I have no one that has signed up to speak on this, so I'll go to questions of council for staff. Are there questions of council for staff? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first off, I appreciate the amount of work that went into putting this together. I know it's a, it is something that we're required to do, but once again, the staff has performed its role very thoroughly. My question is that when we had our study session back in August, we did have a fairly long and in-depth discussion on sprinkler, residential sprinklers, and how the, when we heard from, we heard from the folks on the fire safety side, and we did hear, we did read some information from the folks representing the builders groups. And when it came to residential sprinklers, the representatives of the builders' side commented that adding residential sprinklers to homes, duplexes, single-family duplex, and townhomes would significantly increase the cost of building that home, and including increased tap fees and inspection and maintenance requirements down the road. At that time, and I apologize for not having the time to go back and look at the actual video, but I thought we had decided that townhomes would be exempted from the residential sprinkler requirement.
Thanks for that question. It was a long discussion. Our current exemption applies to one family duplex and townhome, so none of those three require sprinklers. And where we landed at the prior discussion is that we will continue to exempt single unit and duplexes through this code adoption cycle. But townhomes will be the one new dwelling unit type which will have the sprinkler requirement apply, but with a longer runway to anticipate those costs and the required coordination with the water districts. So it's only townhomes to which this would apply as of January 1, 2027.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Director Michelak, can you just briefly, and I'm not really looking for like the names of the members of the Building Code Advisory Board, but they have specific professional requirements to be on that board. Can you just name those professional requirements to be on that board?
That's correct. That's included in the International Code as well as the city's municipal code, where that team is so specialized in reviewing such specialized content that we look for folks with experience as either architects or contractors typically, or somebody who has experience in the construction field. So the group that reviewed the ordinance, we do feel confident had the specialization and experience to do that.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions of staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Hoppe, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2025, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2024 additions of the International Building and Related Codes, including local and conforming amendments, with any technical numbering and conforming corrections as approved by the city attorney on second reading. Order it published, and it takes effect immediately after final publication.
Second.
A motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Weaver?
It doesn't get much more exciting than international building codes and budget in one night. Thank you all very much. I'm happily, happy to support.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to give a big thank you to staff. I know this is a lot of information, but to get everything updated for everybody just paints a really clear picture for the developers and gets us in alignment. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Eight ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Five. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution levying general property taxes for the year 2025 to help defray the cost of government for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2026 budget year. An issue, this resolution authorizes the levying of property taxes for the 2025 fiscal year to help defray the cost of government in 2026.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
Just real quickly, I'll add that the net assessed valuation for the city for the year 2025 was just over 844 million. It's an increase of about 6% increase over the year before. Tabor, the Tabor requires that any increase in a mill levy has to go to the vote of the people. So our current mill levy is 1.830, so City Council cannot change that without a vote of the people. So our mill levy applied to that net assessed valuation of the city will generate approximately 1.5 million in property tax revenue for next year's budget. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this. We'll go to questions from council now. Are there any questions of council before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, may I have a motion on this item, Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 53-2025, Resolution Levying General Property Taxes for the Year 2025 to Help Defray the Cost of Government for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2026 Budget Year.
Second.
Second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Six. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 54-2025, a resolution establishing an expedited review policy for affordable housing projects. This, would you like me to read the issue?
Yes, please.
This resolution affirms the city's commitment to prioritizing affordable housing by formally adopting an expedited review process as outlined in the internal policy document approved by the Community Development Director. The policy ensures that developments with at least 50% of affordable housing units are reviewed and a decision rendered within 90 days of a complete application in compliance with Proposition 123 requirements.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, give us a staff presentation on this item?
We discussed this back in August at a study session, so we're, no presentation. We're here for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I open it up to council questions, I have one member of the public that signed up to speak, Ms. Kim Calomino. If you'd please come to the podium, introduce us. Spell your last name for us. Tell us where you live, where you're working, Wheat Ridge.
Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O. And I do live in Wheat Ridge. And I just want to say, I support this, and I thank you guys for continuing marching towards improving the availability of affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Marching, walking, crawling, rolling, every way we can do it. So thank you very much. Let's see. Okay, questions from council on this item? Mr. Larsen?
Oh, since we are referring to expedited review, can staff discuss what expedited review looks like? How do we expedite the reviews? And are they any different than a traditional review?
Sure, I'm happy to elaborate. Our official policy is a few pages long, and it essentially details exactly what we've asked, how we can be the most efficient on each step of our review. Currently, first review, when it goes out to outside agencies, we ask for them to complete it in 15 days. But usually, because of the queues and the number of staff that we have, our internal review usually takes somewhere between four to eight weeks. An affordable project jumps to the top of the list. So when we are working with an applicant, we go through the entire process, and we agree on both sides, both staff and applicant's team, how quick turnarounds are going to be. Sometimes it is actually easier for us and for the engineering team or the architectural team for the applicant. So we essentially create a custom schedule. And then Shannon Terrell, our housing planner, who you've met and talked to on this topic, she kind of acts as our expediter. So we usually have a planner who's a case manager, but Shannon is going sort of above and beyond to make sure that the applicant is clear on what we're expecting, or, you know, is engineering clear, or getting in touch with the water or fire districts for additional coordination. So it is sort of five times the amount of handholding, popping to the top of the queue, and very strict deadline agreements. There is the opportunity in the state statute to request extensions that we there document because of an unforeseen issue, usually from an outside agency, or that the applicant can invoke. So it's pretty strict what does and doesn't qualify. It's not quite like a chess match where the 90-day shot clock is only on our side. It's on both sides, which makes it all the more complicated from a coordination standpoint. But it is doable. We're testing it now with the second phase of Ives. So it's been a good practice run so far.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Counselor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 54-2025, a resolution adopting an expedited review policy for affordable housing projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Counselor Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce Resolution 55-2025, a resolution adopting the Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Pathway as the Parks and Recreation Department's 10-year master plan. Is there a presentation, or would you like me to?
We do have a presentation.
Handing it over.
All right, good. This is a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, I have this marked as a public hearing. Is that correct?
It is marked. I don't think it's, it's not a public hearing now. Sorry about that. Yeah, no public hearing.
Glad I checked on that.
Yep.
It is not quasi-judicial. Director O'Donnell, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Hopefully, this is more exciting than international building code. But we are here to discuss the Parks and Recreation Pathway. We have been working on this for 18 months. And as you may recall, it is the update to our 10-year master plan. And back in July, we came to you during a study session to go through the draft in more detail. Today's presentation will be a bit shorter, but we'll cover the highlights. And I'd like to introduce J.R. Clanton with Barry Dunn, the consultant working on this project.
Hello, thank you for letting me present to you all today on this, well, I think it's really exciting, project. Sorry, here we go.
There it is.
As Karen said, we came to you all in July with a really in-depth presentation and conversation about the pathway content. So we'll do a higher-level review tonight, and then really hopefully give you all a lot of excitement and enthusiasm for where Wheat Ridge Parks and Rec is heading over the next 10 years. So in July, as we said, we discussed what was in the, what was the content of the plan, really how it was organized, what went into making the recommendations that were in there, and then the process we went through to get to those findings. Since that time, we've developed capital cost and considerations and really completed the document design. The document is, you know, the document will be ADA accessible, so it will meet the requirements of the state. Project purpose and goals, it's really to help guide the next 10 years of investments in parks and recreation in the city. And it's, it has to be grounded in analysis, but also informed by the public. And there's a lot of different types of analyses and public engagement that went into informing this plan. Here is the list of all the different types of analyses and processes we went through to complete the document. And we're finally in step number six here. Community engagement is a really major part of this, and so we did want to highlight it again for you all because a lot of the authority behind what's in this plan comes from this engagement. And it's important to document it and know it because although we're really familiar with it right now, this is a 10-year document, and people are going to be asking several years from now, why are we doing and why are we recommending what's in this document? And community engagement is a major part of that. We attended numerous community events. We had a statistically valid survey, and then we also had a really robust online engagement effort. And then I really do need to sing the praises again for statistically valid survey because we had a really high, our goal was 300, and in one mailing, we got over 400, and we got it within a month. So people really love Wheat Ridge, and they're really willing to share their opinions on the community quickly. We don't normally see this. It normally takes a couple mailings, and it takes a couple months. Again, so that's the community engagement authority in here. What about all of the fun quantitative assessments that happened? We did an organizational assessment, a recreational assessment, demographics analysis of both current demographics as well as projections. And we did robust benchmarking, where we compared not only to national averages, but also local communities identified for their similarities to Wheat Ridge. For the service levels assessment, we did a detailed parks assessment where we actually went to all parks and scored the components that were in there. So it's not just about how close people are to parks. It's about how close they are to specific amenities in parks, what the conditions of those amenities are, and how it, and how those amenities align with their needs. We also did a facility assessment with our partners, Populus. And so they assessed the conditions of eight properties. We did aggregated user activity data to then tell us who's visiting the different locations, where they're going, where they're coming from, how long they're staying, and what the demographics of the. the demographics of those people are. We finally looked at alternative service providers to make sure that Wheat Ridge is considering both competitors as well as service gaps. From all of that analysis and community engagement, we developed these strategic priorities, which we discussed in detail in July. And then we took it a step further since then and identified specific priorities, near-term, medium-term, and long-term within each of those strategic priorities, and those are laid out in the document. Those are kept at a high level intentionally to keep the plan relevant, and this plan is supported through strategic planning, which covers multi-year planning, and then, of course, the budget process, which covers the immediate upcoming year. Capital recommendations in the plan are divided into three types: general parks capital recommendations, park-specific recommendations, and facility-specific recommendations. And then capital costing considerations for each of those are laid out in Appendix E. So, in conclusion, as we're moving forward, some key highlights about the pathway to really understand what it means for the community. It really does reflect the collective vision of Wheat Ridge residents. It's been informed through thousands of voices, through surveys, workshops, and engagement events. It is a roadmap for creating a vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable parks and recreation experience for the residents of Wheat Ridge, and it will help to ensure that Wheat Ridge continues to be a community where residents can connect, thrive, and enjoy the natural beauty that surrounds them. And I'll share this quote from the executive summary. Together, we are forging a pathway toward an exciting and prosperous future for Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation. And I think it's a really great pathway laid out in the document for the next 10 years. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this item, so I'll go to questions from council. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I certainly appreciate the amount of effort that went into the survey. It is, it's quite thorough. The, and especially pleased with the effort that had gone into the, this naturally valid survey that you can, it's, you know, as solid as the rock at Gibraltar. I do, though, question why, first, well, when we did the assessment, when you did the assessment, it only, there were certain parks that were not included for a number of reasons. And that kind of leads me to, if there's a strategy for addressing what can only be called underutilized parks, I have one about two blocks from my home, nobody uses it, except people walk their dogs on it, but it's, the playground isn't used, the grassy area isn't used. There are a couple of other parks around Wheat Ridge that, that nobody uses anymore, and I wonder if there's a way that we can either attract more people to these underutilized parks or find something else to do with them, maybe sell them, maybe use the money when you sell one park to buy another one, because people obviously want more parks. So, you know, and everybody, I think, would support that idea. The question is, how do you pay for it? So, again, I'd like to see how, or even if the Parks and Recreation Department has a strategy for addressing the issue of parks that are simply not used.
It's part of the plan. There are, each park is, is looked at, was, or was looked at as part of the process, and there were recommendations made for each park in terms of what amenities or other programming could take place there. But I don't know that it goes to the level of detail that you're requesting. I mean, I'd be interested to know more of what park specifically you're talking about, and we can do some internal work separate and apart from the pathway too, to address that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have that discussion. I don't think we need to do that tonight.
Sure.
But it is something I think we need to address.
Thank you. Additional questions from council before, of council before I ask for a motion on this item? Looks like we, oh, Councilor Omm, I almost missed you.
That's okay. I just had a couple that I found really interesting on page 328. At the top, in the top four, it said, "Outdoor environmental and nature programs" was one thing, and then it said, "Cultural enrichment programs." Could you, I don't want to take up too much time, but just kind of give me a overview of what those two things, is that something that we, we kind of have right now, or is it something that we need to start and something we need to grow really rapidly?
I would say something we kind of have right now is a good answer, but something that we can certainly grow and do a better job of learning what the community specifically wants and addressing that in our programming and events specifically.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, hearing none. Councilor Hulteen, may I have a motion on this item?
You sure can. Just have to scroll to it, sorry, there's so much, this is such a gigantic packet. It is with much enthusiasm that I move to approve Resolution 55-2025, a resolution adopting the Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Pathway as the Park, Parks and Recreation Department's 10-year master plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Last time we adopted this, I was in the, in the community and had been really involved in that process, and I think we got a great master plan out of this, but I really love, first of all, that just the outreach and data that went into this, it just, it has created such a different insight into really the kind of priorities we need to be making. I mean, Parks and Rec is a lot of prioritization, and there's a lot of long-term investments. And if there's one thing I've heard since day one, I started getting involved in the city, it's that our Parks and Rec are really like at the heart of our community. So, I think this is, you know, gives me clarity for the next two years about what's important. But I think it also provides that flexibility as our demographics change and to Mr. Larson's point, like how our parks are being utilized is being changed as our demographics change. So, I think just the framework is flexible enough so that 10 years from now, when I'm back in the community side and we're doing this again, I think we're going to really see just a really strategic and rich reinvestment in our parks and recreation as, as places where communities come together. So, just thank you, everyone, for your good work. I'm really excited by this.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for all of this. It's a lot of great work, and I, I know that across the board, our community loves our parks. And I'm, while I'm glad that we impressed you with our numbers for the survey, I wasn't that surprised, because people are so passionate about our parks. And I'm really glad that we showed up and gave our opinions and thoughts, but just one more thing to be proud of here in Wheat Ridge, our parks and all of the programming and all of the effort that goes into constantly trying to just go to the next level with them, and I'm so grateful. And I'm looking forward to seeing this roll out, so thank you so much for the hard work.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to start with, please don't sell any parks. People are a little sensitive about that right now. No, I really enjoyed the pathway, because I'm one of those users of parks. I go check my goats in the middle of the night, and, you know, I am not your typical family user of a park. And I thought that just the breadth of the surveying, it really got at all the different ways that we use parks and think about space. And, and I just love some of the programming that has been integrated in, you know, you were talking about the stuff we're kind of doing. I think of the leave no trace stuff in the last few years, and that's just fantastic. It just really is opening up how we, how we think about, well, I don't even know if recreating is the word, meditating all the things that we do in our open spaces. So, thank you both, thank you, Karen. I'm just looking forward to all of this.
Thank you, Councilor Omm.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say, you know, from the top-level high view, this has a lot of really interesting points of view, and it was very well thought out. And then I really do appreciate all the detail when we start looking at, you know, the individual parks and potential components. It even raised some interesting questions for discussion that I won't discuss tonight, but I really, I really do appreciate all the data and everything that went through that this is a, this is a lot, that, you know, we have a path forward and, you know, we got some responses from, good responses from our community to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will go to agenda item number eight. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
I'd be happy, Mayor. Would you like me to also read the issue?
We have a presentation under, Mr. Goff?
We do have a quick presentation. The chief waited all evening, so we're going to make him speak.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm not going to read the issue. This is a motion approving the designation of Colorado State Highway 121, which is Wadsworth Boulevard, and Colorado State Highway 391, which is Kipling Street, between 32nd Avenue and 50th Avenue as official automated speed corridors.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council that is not quasi-dutational, and as we discussed before, I believe that staff has a presentation on this item.
Yeah, Chief Murtha, please.
Okay, Chief Murtha.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I will be extremely brief tonight. Come to talk about everybody's favorite subject, traffic enforcement in the city of Wheat Ridge. As required under state law, I have to come before council to ask you to consider this motion to support the continued rollout of Wheat Ridge's automated speed camera program. Originally approved in October 2024, the program aims to continue to enhance public safety, reduce speeding, and propose fair and consistent traffic enforcement through technology-driven monitoring. Both Colorado Department of Transportation and Colorado State Patrol have granted approval for these corridors, which represents key areas of regional traffic activity. Final council approval is required before we can proceed any further. If approved, the new enforcement areas will expand the city's successful speed management initiative, which has already demonstrated measurable reductions in vehicle speeds and traffic violations. To that end, approximately 30% reduction in the amount of citations that we're sending out now as compared to when we first initiated this program. So, we see that. We also see speed reductions through our black box program, where we monitor speeds without citation throughout the city of about 10 to 15% lower speed, so we think that that's a result of this type of enforcement. As always, we will continue to advertise these new locations. There's no surprise here, but we would like to start with our handheld speed enforcement cameras, using those on the corridors to help some of the folks who don't always see our neighborhood as a neighborhood and cut through at speeds that exceed our tolerances. So, that is my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so we'll go with to questions from council and start with Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, so you said that you would be using handheld units, so these would not be posted on poles or light pole, or light poles? It would be like an actual, when an officer has the time to be on the corridor with, with a speed gun, is that?
I'm sorry, that was a little confusing, the way I put it. That's how we would start it, just because we have that technology, but eventually we would put out probably a mobile trailer. What we're trying to aim to see is just where exactly along those corridors are the largest problem for us is for speeding. We think going down the hill, probably on Kipling is going to be a speed corridor, and we're not sure about the other ones, but uphill, so we want to make sure we're not renting a trailer that's not going to serve the purpose of reducing speed. So, we're going to look at those using that handheld device and eventually switch over, if necessary, to a more fixed asset, either a pole-mounted like you see at the school or trailer-mounted like you see currently on 44th, where we could move it later on. So, I'm sorry if that was confusing.
Thank you.
Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so can you just give a little bit more detail about what permission tonight means and then what you're anticipating the rollout and implementation is in terms of timeline and in the corridors specifically?
Yes. Well, permission grants us the approval to work on state highways, which is a different, different than obviously our municipal roads and our local streets. So, it is a requirement under state law that we come and we ask the council to grant us that permission. We also needed permission from the Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado State Patrol to do that. So, tonight, if we're, if granted that, we would begin, we've already begun conversations with our contractor, Altman, to install these cameras down the road should we need to. They have to do their own certification to make sure it's worth their while to install them, which they've done on these roads and say they're both, potentially both worthy of a fixed or a trailer, a trailed camera on either one of them, but that would be the next step in this. But we are pretty poised to start moving on that relatively rapidly. We're waiting to kind of see how traffic moves on Wadsworth, though, before we jump ahead on that with the new traffic configuration. We're just not sure if it's going to be necessary or not, but we are looking at 32nd and Wadsworth as a potential intersection of continued problems over there. So, I don't know if I've answered your whole question.
Yeah, that did answer my question, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, as noted, these are Colorado State highways, so can you talk about the relationship between the city of Wheat Ridge and the state of Colorado, how data is stored, shared amongst jurisdictions, if it's Colorado State Highway?
Yes, and I suspect this question comes as a result of some of that media given to other camera systems that are used. Our, our data is our data, it's not a shared database, it's stored for 30 days. We can use it if there are, if there's a need for a criminal review for potentially vehicles, but then it's, then it's completely washed from the system. That's just an agreement we've made with them, because we see a value in potentially having those license plates for our own personal use, but it's not shared with any federal agencies or outside of Wheat Ridge, and that's written into our contract that way.
Councilor Omm.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the data, besides the individual person, do you have data that says, you know, what the speed, like average speed, top speed, that, and is that something that we would keep for future reference? That, you know, kind of more, I guess, anonymous data?
Yes. We, we have heaps of data that is the anonymous, how many vehicles pass through, what their average speed was, what the average speed by month is, you know, what the total number of citations that were rejected by us was, what the number, so yes, we have that data, but as far as keeping the tag and the registered owner's information, that's purged after 30 days. So, yes, we keep that for the purpose of continuing this program or not, so we have comparators year to year as this moves forward, hopefully someday to not need it anymore, but that's the purpose of maintaining that generic data, I'll call it.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe. You all set? The chief, I just had a question, I'll be right with you. On this, the, you put out a posting for the public that Speed Trap, a speed device, I don't want to say trap, but maybe I should, is, is coming up, right?
Yes, it kind of goes back to Councilor Hoppe's question, but even with our handheld devices, we're required to put signage out there. So, if we're doing a handheld device, there is a sign, I believe it's 300 feet in front, 300 feet on the backside of it. We have portable signs that we, we put out there if we're running not a Speed Trap, but a Speed Enforcement Zone or a Speed Safety Zone out there, so that we can, we can alert the public. It's no surprise. And then also, we don't advertise those sites on, on the website, but we do post all of our fixed locations on the website, so.
Okay. Well, and just so, you know, the perception is, you know, and I'm sure you, you've been down Kipling at 32nd going north, and that, that does look like a speed hill. If you were on skis and going down there, you'd.
You'd want a snowplow on that one.
You'd, no, you'd go on right away. Who do I have next? Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And given that we're hearing a lot of talk, radio talk about the speed cameras employed by a certain company, a safety company in Denver. by a certain company, a safety company in Denver, where the intent of these cameras is to identify repeat offenders, identify stolen cars and that sort of thing. Can you tell us clearly that that is not the intent of what we're asking for tonight?
Yes, I could tell you definitively, yes, it's not the intent. But also, that's a separate system. It's actually not a speed camera system that you're discussing here. The, the controversial system is used to identify vehicles. It's, it's a, it's a system that will capture license plates and will capture information about vehicles, but it's not intended as a speed camera program. So we have never participated in that program. That program, the reason that program is successful in law enforcement is because it does link the network of cameras from one jurisdiction to another. So it breaks down the jurisdictional boundaries, but of course, it comes with controversy as who has the access to those systems. So we, we don't have any access, any direct access. I guess we could call somebody up if we wanted to in a neighboring jurisdiction and ask them if they could check and see if a red Buick came through an intersection at a certain time. But we don't have those cameras in the, in the city. We have a separate camera system that we are phasing out that's not linked to anybody else. It was bought probably six, five or six years ago, and it's really no longer the state-of-the-art camera. It was bought with federal funds, so we're sort of phasing that one out. But we're not linked into any other camera systems, either through this company or through the system that Denver uses now. We've, we've avoided that because of the controversy, and I had those conversations with Mr. Goff and told him that I thought, well, you know, as, as good as a tool as that can be for law enforcement, it wasn't worth the, the water that it came with.
Yes, thank you. And, and I, I understand now that we are, what we're looking to approve tonight is, is a traffic safety program and nothing else.
Thank you.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in the short term, thinking about citations with the officers that are going to be using the handheld, does that mean that they're actually going to have to get out, write a ticket? Or will they, it all be, will all be automated from the beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
It is by default, it's exactly the same as a, as a pole-mounted camera, except that we're able to use that and then more in the neighborhoods that we discussed early on and move it around to different streets and, and sections that wouldn't normally rise to the level of needing a full-time camera system.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more questions from staff before I ask for motion on this item? Seeing none, Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may. I move to approve the designation of Colorado State Highway 121, Wadsworth Boulevard and Colorado State Highway 391, Kipling Street, between 32nd Avenue and 50th Avenue as official automated speed corridors.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Potent cites. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, so I'm glad that our existing program is, is working well, and I definitely support designating these as speed corridors. I am really hesitant about doing any enforcement on Wadsworth until we're at least six months out past the completion of the existing construction. We have a lot of constituents who are really freaked out about it, and, and we have a lot of constituents who are not a big fan of the automated enforcement, not necessarily that we're doing it, but they've had some glitches and bad experiences when we were first kind of ironing some of that stuff out. So just want to be really sensitive that the Wadsworth corridor is, is, you know, not the safest corridor in our community, but I want to just be sensitive that we have a lot of residents who are, you know, feeling some anxiety about it. And if we were, you know, upping automated enforcement while they're acclimating to a new lane configuration and sort of post-construction. So my request would be that we do not start any of that work until we're six months past the, the completion of the Wadsworth corridor.
Counselor Dozeman.
Well, I'm, I'm seeing a yes from the chief, so I guess I'm looking for some confirmation that that's an okay way to proceed with that.
We, yes, we, we don't, we hadn't planned on any sort of fixed posting on there. We were thinking we were going to do some testing on there, but we can hold off for six months on that for sure. I, I just don't think that traffic is going to move very, it's going to move more efficiently, but I don't think it's going to move very fast on Wadsworth, so it's not our concern. Where we're seeing accidents on Wadsworth is 32nd and Wadsworth, and we're looking at that for a red light camera down the road here, not necessarily speed enforcement.
I have a point of order from Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you. I would just request that Councilwoman Holtein either ask as a consensus or as an amendment to the original motion, please.
Yeah, thank you. I was seeking the clarification. So I, I'm actually okay with this as it is and would like to seek a consensus that we ask staff to delay any automated enforcement until six months past the completion of the Wadsworth project.
Real quick, the completion with the continuous flow of lanes open or completion when the landscaping is finished? Because we're, that's like six months after.
I think, I mean, what are we considering the completion date? That's a good question, Counselor Larson.
The, the end of the year will, will be done with the CFIs. They'll be open by the end of the year, so landscaping will go into next year probably.
Okay.
So it'll be substantially completed by the end of this year.
Okay, so I will modify my consensus to remove the ambiguity of completion of Wadsworth and say until no sooner than July 1st, 2026. Great, thank you.
Are there any other discussion on the motion? Counselor Dozeman? Oh, she'll have it.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I would like the last vote of my career to be an I, I take a lot of issue with the technology and the policies and programming and how they evolve over time. I think the controversy surrounding some of the technology is kind of just a precursor into some of the issues that we'll continue to see. And my specific concern is that these are on Colorado State highways, so they're not really within our jurisdiction. So although the data is ours, I'm concerned that the state of Colorado could come in and supersede that since it is technically their highway. So along the same lines as that relationship-based policing that I supported prior to the implementation of the other speed late, or speeding and red light cameras, I'm going to have to oppose this. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please pull the counsel?
Seven ayes, one no, motion carries.
Thank you very much. That concludes our action items tonight. We will now go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, with the federal government shutdown, SNAP benefits have been suspended as well. Those are supplemental nutrition, see if anybody knows what SNAP stands for? Let me just look it up. It's a, it's a food program. And so Family Tree, who, which I'm on the board of, and then also our Community Table, a food bank, are both having food drives right now. We will have locations at City Hall, the Rex Center, Active Dalton Center, and then Family Tree at 38th and Marshall in Wheat Ridge. So if anybody's out there listening, people are going to desperately needing some assistance with food. So if you can donate some non-perishable items, that would be great. Again, we'll have locations at Wheat, City Hall, Active Dalton Center, the Wheat Ridge Rex Center, and Family Tree Office on 38th and Marshall. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Let's get officials matters. We'll start with Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate City Manager Goff bringing that up. That was on my list, and I appreciate that. When will those boxes start or when will those collections start?
They're out now.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Well, I wanted to first recognize all of our members of the public that came tonight, either virtually on the phone or in person or via email for commenting on, on our various topics. It's always great to have voices from our community, from our neighboring community to the north, you know, on, on different things, so I'm, I'm grateful for that. I did want to just mention, as we all know, Halloween is Friday, and I've seen a lot of just wonderful decorations and, and people who are getting ready to accept trick-or-treaters. And, and with that comes a lot of excitement, but also please drive safe. It's getting dark earlier. So just please be safe on Friday night, a little extra safe. We should always be safe. But, and thank you to everyone who's put in a little extra work. I, I think we could all use a little bit of extra fun, and, and kids deserve a little extra this year with Halloween, so thank you for that. Be safe. And just in some fun park news, I was on a walk this weekend, and the tennis courts at Panorama Park, while they're not open yet, they look great, and I cannot wait. They're very close to my house. And Mayor, I know that when we were discussing these much earlier, that you and I and one, and I, I'm sorry, I can't remember, there was one other counselor that mentioned interest in a backboard, and there are two backboards at the new tennis courts. So we don't have to go play each other. We can just hit the ball against the backboard together.
You know, I don't find too many other opponents that really want to play with me, so that's great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto. Thank you for everyone who took the time to join us in person or virtually tonight. Just want to continue the call for support in the face of the, the lack of SNAP funding. I was talking with some colleagues who are working in the space, and I just have a couple of facts that I think are really important for us to know. In Jeffco, over 2,200 households, or sorry, 22,000 households, 38,000 individuals receive $7.6 million in SNAP funding monthly. And something that's really important to keep in mind that this is not just $7.5 million less in food funds for families, but it's also $7.5 million lost sales for local food businesses. So encouragement as you are both doing the outreach and support you can through donations to shop locally and support our local food stores because the revenues are also not showing up for them as well. So that's money that goes through our community twice. And so as, as the city manager men- mentioned, there's food, there's food drives, Feeding Jeffco Together is a place you can donate funds if you don't want to donate food. So please, you know, find what you can to help contribute because the, the numbers are, are pretty substantial in our county. And then on a fun note, I went on Thursday night, The Grange, which I am now officially a member. They have like a monthly get-together, and so I did Community Night. And one of the things that came up at The Grange, we were, you know, we were brainstorming on how to better use it to engage and reach our community, let the community bring their good ideas, and they kept talking about how do we, how is neighboring a verb? Like, how do we do neighboring? And so I just really want to recognize, we're so fortunate to have The Grange, and for $45, you too can be a member of The Grange for an individual, and then I think it's something like $75 for a household. So it is such a cost-effective way to have a seat at a table on shaping how our community finds each other and how we do neighboring. So please join me at The Grange. You can join online. You don't have to chase someone down with cold cash or write a check. So I am, I'm challenging to get 20 more memberships before Thanksgiving, so please be one of the 20 new members of The Grange. And then lastly, I just want to speak, you know, we heard tonight from Morgan Richards and have heard from other community members that, you know, we didn't have a chance here two weeks ago to address the swazika appearance on I-70. And I just, I can't imagine just the horror of somebody who might have seen that. To, to have that so close to our backyard is just chilling. And, you know, we've had other incidents in our community in the last, you know, couple months that, you know, really look, look our, our resolute, you know, opposition to racism and hate in our community. It's, you know, a time getting bolder and closer, and so I just appreciate here that we stand together in not tolerating that. And my heart goes out to my community members and neighbors who are experiencing that through the lens of a Jewish identity. So that's all I got tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And the, for, for anybody that drives on Garrison Street and passes under the I-70 underpass on Garrison, there is some utility work going on there. There's a private, private contractor apparently replacing some underground pipes or something like that, and they have the lanes blocked down, and anybody that goes through there knows that there's a lot of big trucks and small trucks and cars and SUVs and loud motorcycles. And as a neighbor to that, to that area, I would request that you please don't lay on the horn. They're getting their work done. They're trying to do their work, and when you lay on the horn or rev up your loud motorcycle, it disturbs everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know I'll be able to speak more to this during our changeover on November 10th, but I, it has just been an honor and a privilege of a lifetime to serve with all of you and those that also served before you. This eight years has been really fascinating, and it's been a wonderful experience, and I just thank each and every one of you for having the camaraderie that we do, even in disagreements, and, and just really appreciate learning and, and leading alongside all of you. And then I also want to thank Parks and Rec for the Wheat Ridge trunk or treat that happened at the 38th, the green on 38th. My kids and I really enjoyed it. There were some really awesome cars, really long line, like wrapped around the block, so it's really made its mark. And then my kids and I also enjoyed Lutheran Hospital's Fall Fest, and our senior 15-year-old dog Ace won the pet costume parade. So first place. So I was like, oh, he's a wiener. Yay! And I also do want to address some of the comments that have been made. I think, you know, it's over the last three weeks, we've seen, seen a microscope and spotlight kind of on some of the diversity, equity, and inclusion work. And I, I appreciate all of us leaning into those conversations. I know many of us come from a lens of, of wanting to see that work move forward and, and not wanting to marginalize populations to, to elevate margin, already marginalized populations. And it has really been a difficult topic to address over the last several years, and it is one of those situations where divided we fall and united we stand. So just really appreciate all of us being willing to have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take a little bit of your time tonight, about five minutes, because it's not going to fit into three minutes in two weeks. I wrote you all a thank you note, so I'd like to read it, and I'm not sure I'm going to be able to look at any of you, so bear with me. I know I'm not very often serious, so. Well, I'm, yeah, I'm super serious here on the dais all the time. I'm here with gratitude in my heart for the last seven years of service on this dais. We've done some amazing work together through a pandemic, a national questioning of equity and identity, a major employer who thankfully decided to move down the street, still in District 3, I will note, leaving 100-plus acres for new housing options. We've tackled homelessness as well as a hotel district that had some of the worst human trafficking and addiction problems of any of the largest cities in the country. And let us not forget the massage parlor licensing program, which curbed prostitution in our little old urban ag-friendly city. This council has embraced these very real urban issues and did so in our very unique local Wheat Ridge way. I am so proud to be part of a city that can see its failings and turn it into lemonade or beer that we sell at Ridge Fest or the Carnation Festival. And it is because of each of you that this council has been successful. Every night I have sat here with you, I have learned from your unique and amazing qualities, which I'm going to go through right now. Counselor Snell, your quiet power to listen empowers others. I've never witnessed you cut anyone off, nor have I seen you turn away, literally, from giving someone your full attention. Councilperson Larson, your meticulous questioning is important, and I very much appreciate that you want everyone- and I very much appreciate that you want everyone, every person in Wheat Ridge to understand what is at stake in an issue. Councilperson Hoppe, you show up on tough issues with words and experience that matter. Your service on local boards and school activities brought real examples to issues we face on council. Mayor Starker, you've made such a difference with how Wheat Ridge is viewed across our region. Your integrity with telling our story and the respect you give other governments has allowed you to build bridges that will last. Mayor Protem Stites, being from a founding family can be a blessing and a curse. You have used your historic name in this community to both move mountains and to create connections with future Wheat Ridge families. Bear with me. Councillor Ohm, after also serving on Planning Commission with you, I continue to learn from you to ask hard questions about the how in physical space. The number of trees on a parcel matters and impacts our perception of green space, as does how sustainability is being employed through smart water and energy use. You make sure we walk our talk in good planning code. Councilperson Dozeman, you are a smart and independent thinker. Over the years, I've watched you find your fears. You can do anything. I am so excited to see where this launches you. Councilperson Holtin, serving on council with you, with one of my oldest and dearest friends, has taught me one of the most important lessons, that of the third path. When I have been at my most frustrated in this council gig, my friend Rachel has asked me, what's the third path? The one where people aren't turning away from each other, but turning towards each other? Policymaking is a process that can and should bring people together. Mr. Goff and Mr. Dahl, you are our Mr. Spocks. You both bring logic and balance amidst emotional dilemmas. And from the west rest of the Wheat Ridge community, I have learned that most residents have no idea of the time and effort that has gone into making Wheat Ridge a happy place. Happy people don't usually come to council meetings. Someone who takes the time to tell us about what is happening in their lives is not doing so because they are just friendly extroverts. Well, there are some of them. Often, like tonight, they feel disempowered and unheard. They are frustrated because whatever has brought them in is keeping them from the happy they would like to have. It could be a dog, a fence, a rooster, a neighbor, a building permit, a zoning change. This is the only place most people will ever truly experience democracy, having their voice heard by a locally elected group of peers. And whether I have agreed with them or not, I have learned to look behind the immediate complaint for the larger issue lurking in the shadows. It is with gratitude that I take all of these lessons into my next challenges and leave you with this parting advice. I'm almost done. To council, listen, take notes, show up with integrity, treat all people like a founding family, walk your talk, find your fears, seek logic and balance. Know that you can have empathy without agreement and always turn towards each other. To constituents, regardless of what someone promises in a campaign, the only way things get done on city council is through consensus. Choose someone willing to build bridges and mend fences. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councillor Ohm.
Thanks.
Follow that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councillor Weaver. That was, that was really great, everything you've done so far. And I know your future is really bright. Wish you, wish you well, and I'll have more words come later. So a couple of things I wanted to address was Wheat Ridge is definitely not immune to the, you know, the hateful graffiti I witnessed myself. And I don't bring it to the city's attention, except for Patrick. And when I've seen that, I'm usually the one on my bike, and I'm out there, I'm stopping, and I'm taking pictures. And I've seen some stuff. One of the problem areas we have is under that Kipling Tunnel. And I told Patrick, like, this is awful. We need to get it fixed immediately. And immediately, the Parks Department, probably within the hour, is down there and trying to paint over that and get that out of the way so we don't see it. And so when I see, that's what I encourage everybody in our city to do, is when we see something like that, we gotta, we gotta get on top of it, get on top of that hateful graffiti. But, and I appreciate that. And then the other thing I wanted to try to light on is that I've been on Planning Commission for a long time and in city council. And I can tell you, on all those, in my day job, I'm dealing with, on the other side, I'm dealing with development. And I want to say that tonight was super impressive of having an affordable housing project where all the comments were extremely positive, and not just from the city of Wheat Ridge, from our neighbors in Arvada. And so I want to thank those people living in Arvada for weighing in. You know, that amount of civility was just, is just amazing. And to have everybody come and give positive support for that, I don't want to say that we've turned a page. I just feel like we're moving forward, that, you know, people are understanding. I remember not that long ago, when, you know, my councilmember Holtin and I at the Ives, when, before we broke ground, we had, you know, probably 20, 30 people, and they were, they were pretty upset. We had everybody there. Chief was there, Patrick was there, and we had a lot of discussions. And people were really worried about their home values. And last week, when I was at that CDOT ribbon cutting, I had a constituent come up to me. He was complaining that his, and I'm not trying to make light of this, but he's complaining that his mom, who lived near there, her property values were going up. And I, I didn't have anything to say to them, you know, as far as that particular issue. But what I do want to remind everybody is that when we do these affordable housing projects, they're done with a lot of, you know, thoughtfulness and really good design intent. And they really add some, you know, really great value to our community. And so tonight, I was just like, wow, that was, that was a 10 of what we've done so far. So looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hoppe.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Holtin said it better than I did, but I was talking to a District 3 resident earlier today about the anti-Semitic stuff that happened a couple of weeks ago. And we've, as a council, have been, let's say, victims of the Zoom bombing and other stuff here in Wheat Ridge. And so there is a lot of hate in this world. And I would encourage our idea committee to come up with a response to that. And maybe us as a council can sit and talk about it as well. But we have a lot of Jewish people that live in this community, and we really want to make sure that we step up and respond to that, because I don't believe that's what Wheat Ridge is, and I don't believe that's what Jeffco is. And I think that we saw that tonight with the affordable housing and the positive comments that came from that. So hopefully, we can respond to that in a more formal way. But it was absolutely disgusting and something that should never happen ever again. Staying on kind of a sad note, District 3 resident Paul Demont passed away this past weekend. That's Joe Demont's father. And that's a huge loss to our community. Fantastic family. And really, our heart goes out to Joe and his entire family. Kind of right now, as they're getting through this, it's a tough thing, no matter how old your father is, to lose him. I want to congratulate the Wheat Ridge High School band who competed in the state championships today. I'm not sure how they did, but I know that they were up early this morning and traveling to go compete. And that's pretty phenomenal to have our band with a lot of, a lot of kids who live in our community competing in that today. I will have a lot more to say about our outgoing councillors, but it's been an honor serving with our outgoing councillors and our mayor the last six years with you guys, some of you for a lot longer. It's pretty phenomenal, the things as we look back over the last few years that we've been able to accomplish together. And it's, you'll hear me say this a lot more, we've gone hard on the issues, but not hard on each other. And a lot of times, in the history of Wheat Ridge, that's not been the case, where councils have gone hard on each other and not on the issues. So, and I think that comes from our mayor and his leadership, so I really appreciate that. Having said that, we do have a lot of councillors and our mayor leaving. So I would remind our community that next Tuesday is voting day. So if you haven't submitted your ballots yet, please make sure you get them in. And while you're voting, please vote for 2B. Yes on 2B. Thank you. Oh, and if you can find it, you should find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll probably have some more things to say in a couple of weeks when our councillors depart the stage. But I want to say that being the mayor has been an honor of my lifetime, really, and a privilege. And I want to, I want to tell, say what a wonderful council I've had the opportunity to, to help lead. And you guys are really, you know, thoughtful on the issues. And I believe we've got a real rapport, and I think you're doing the best that you can for your constituents. And I think that's what you ought to be doing. Had a wonderful staff, Mr. Goff and his, and his staff, and do great things in this community. We are much better than, than our punching weight, or whatever the expression is, you know, punching above our weight. But I think we really have one of the best cities in the state of Colorado. And I think our, what we, what we deliver to our citizens really, really shows it. And I think we've come a long way. And lastly, I want to say what a great community and a great group of citizens and residents we have in this city. We have people that are energized. We have people that are, that are, you know, welcoming their neighbors and investing in their communities, you know, either in a business sense or in a personal sense, and fixing up their properties and, and, you know, taking care of their children and their families. And it's a great place to be. So I'm glad that I've lived here. I'm finishing 50 years in my house, and I hope I've got another 50. But I don't, may not have 50, but maybe I've got 25. But anyway, I want to thank you all for, for making this just a job that I'm really privileged to be. We will not be here next week. Our, we will close for the election. And as the Mayor Protem said, that a week from, a week from tomorrow, we have an important election. And it's really a responsibility of all of our citizens to register to vote and to vote. And that's what makes our democracy strong. So we will, we will not be here next week, but we will be here the week after that in a regular meeting at 6:30, and I hope you'll, you'll be, be able to join us then. We are going to adjourn here in just a few moments and go into an executive session. So we will recess this meeting before we go into session, or do you want to?
Yeah, I think the motion calls to come back, so just read the motion, I think. A little surprise.
You want to read that motion then?
I move to go to an executive session for a conference with the city attorney, city manager, and appropriate staff under Charter Section 5.7b1 and CRS 24-6-402-4F for a personnel matter, performance review for the city manager. I further move to return to open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session to take any actions deemed necessary.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go into executive session.
This is Mayor Starker and it is now 10:31. We have resumed the regular session after our executive session and there is no business to come before the council, so we will stand adjourned.